The taxpayers have the final say so at town meeting. Please be there. Thank you.
Any, any, any other comments before we get started? All right. Let's start with our Department 100, the governing body.
No, we're gonna go with the article, article two. We tried to place these for...
I don't have a copy.
On the agenda?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry. Sorry. Okay, we consider Department 500, Public Works Budget. 500.
So, trying to recap before we, for the board members who haven't been part of the process yet, the way that we run through our finance committee members have gotten a chance to see how it works. We go through the budgets line by line. Each department head is here to speak on behalf of their budget. They will make explanations where they think, you know, there might need, there's probably gonna be some questions. They are here to take your questions. Most of the time, they have the answers. If there are answers that they cannot make for you, we will get back to you and we'll flag, we'll flag that line item for future discussion. So, it's a process that worked well. And with that being said, Kevin Dubey is here to speak on behalf of his budget and we can start down through, if you will.
What, line by line or just?
We're gonna go, we're gonna go down line by line. I will start with the salaries for you, Kevin, and you can talk about your operating expenses. So, as, as you see here, we are flat funding our salaries. There are no COLA increases or merit increases for, for department employees. And if you look down, what trends below the salaries and wages are the benefits, main state retirement, health insurance. Health insurance has, and as for all departments, the, the health insurance that we have is with the MMEHD, Main Municipal Health Trust. They set their rates on a calendar year. We are on a fiscal year. So, we budget in when they tell us what they have for projected increases. We budget that in six months. For six months of our business here, the last six months, not a whole year. So, we are projecting a 10% increase from, from the MMEHD on the health insurance. And of course, the social security and the Medicare numbers follow the payroll from above. So, salaries and wages are flat from last year at $416,000 and, $416,231. There are nine full-time and one part-time employee there in that department. Main state retirement, the town's contribution to main state retirement is $42,039. Health insurance, towns, the town's contribution to the employers, to the employees' share of health insurance is $157,500 for that department. $25,806 for SSI, Social Security, and $6,035 for Medicare. For total benefits of $231,381. Any questions?
Does the town pay the medical insurance to the employees in full?
The town pays 100% to the employee, pays 60% for the, for the family. And if an employee opts out, and we have two plans that we offer, and if an employee opts out of the plan, they don't want to, they elect to not, we pay a $300 month stipend back to them for not participating in the, in the, in the plans.
Have we ever checked with other communities what their policy is, what their contribution is to their employees? I'm just wondering because I know of very, very few places that pay medical insurance in full. And I'm just wondering if we're going mobile board.
It varies. I can't tell you specifically. It depends by community. It depends by community size and community budget. I think that it's important to remember that insurance and benefits and salaries and wages all play, are something that evolve over time. Okay, so there are municipalities who probably pay less than, in their benefits to the, for the employees. But, but the odd, the opposite of that would be, they probably pay more per hour. I'll give you an example. The ambulance department, we pay their health insurance. We have a good, we have a good retirement plan for them. They could probably make five, six bucks more an hour working for ambulance service in Fort Kent. But they're not gonna have the benefits that they do here. So, you gotta look at the whole picture and not just, you gotta contrast their benefits to what they're making per hour in their salaries and benefits.
How part-time employees, do they get any benefits?
Part-time employees are, are, can get half, half the benefit. So, they're, Carol, do you remember off the top of your head?
I think we only have one employee that's part-time.
Yeah.
Yep, go ahead Laurie.
I know that Manon and I have had discussions about this. I think then we're kind of all on the same page. I know at least one of the finance committee people, we all kind of looked at, at this. I've written a lot of numbers down in the last couple of months and the only thing we do have to be mindful of, and it is something we can address as a whole because it's not just Public Works, it's, you know, the whole, is that there would be departments that we would then need to adjust wages. So while there could be some savings there, you'll have to, or you're gonna lose people that are trained for specific things. I'm, I'm, I'm on the same, nobody's ignoring you. Well, I'm not. Maybe everyone else is, but we're, I think our minds are kind of the same. It needs to be looked at as a whole package.
Okay, but as we start, we are at the very beginning of all of this. Do we have a goal in mind? Are we looking to make any cuts or are we just rubber stamping last year's budget?
Well, if we're talking benefits right now, I mean...
As a whole?
Well, as a whole, we have to discuss it as a whole. We can't discuss it in, in one budget. We have to discuss it with every budget. We have to have everybody here to discuss that.
Yes, but as selectmen, are we to have in our mind that we need to start trimming off some of the fat?
Well, I mean, I'm not arguing with you at this point. All I'm saying is if we're going to do that, if we're gonna address that, then that's a whole other issue. You know, if we're gonna discuss budgets, I mean, benefits, then, then we have to start looking at bringing everybody here, all of the departments, and, and they have a say in, in, in their benefits. We can't just tackle one.
I, I think that if you're gonna have, if you're gonna wanna have a conversation about health insurance benefits, you gotta keep two things in mind. The, the employee, there is an open enrollment period that we have to follow. So, and then there is, they have to be given the opportunity to change plan if it's, if it's having a financial impact on them. Number two, if we're gonna have a discussion about health insurance benefits, then I think that has to be in a discussion in and of itself with giving our valuable employees the benefit of being here as a whole. Because they've all dedicated their careers to this town, and I think we owe it to them so that they can come here and represent and take, and listen, and you can hear from them directly, not through me or one department head. You can hear from them, they can hear from you directly, what your thoughts and concerns are, and they can likewise share theirs with you so that everybody's making an informed decision here, a fully informed decision. So, I think that health insurance, if it is the will of this board to take a look at health insurance and, and employee participation rates in there, then make that statement and then let's plan on having a meeting and affording our employees a due diligence to have the opportunity to sit down with this board.
I'm, I'm not looking specifically at, at the medical insurance coverage for the employees. That was just one question on one area. If there's something I'm not getting, please enlighten me. But when this entire process is done from A to Z, are we looking to cut the total budget by any certain amount? Or are we just reviewing this? That's, that's my question.
My, Laurie's gonna, will answer that. My budget, this budget here, and the department's budgets, we've been asked to save as much as we can and maintain services, and that's what this budget does. Okay, so if there are, if, if the board is of the mind, if the majority of the board is of the mind that they wanna look for more, then they need to tell us what they want us to look for in those cuts. And if it's, what would it, what would we save if we ask the employees to pay 10% of their health plan? What would that number, we're gonna go to the drawing board, we're gonna take a look. If we're gonna ask a particular department to cut a service, we're gonna have, ask them to take a look at what that, what impact that would have and what it actually looks like from a dollar figure. But, you know, in my mind, it's a policy decision of this board. Right now, to go be up below this, we're looking at, at cuts to services somewheres, or programs. And, and this budget as presented right now does not do that. It, it's less than last year by about $38,000 maintaining services. So, it's the will of the board.
So, are you saying that we don't have the money that we need? Is that what you're saying? Or we have a surplus? I, I didn't quite follow that.
Can, can I?
Yeah, go ahead Laurie.
So, so here's, Dana, I understand, I understand where you're going 100%. You and I have this discussion. I look at budgets a whole different way than this, and when I first came on board, we had a lot of conversations about this because for me, this was just, you know, I, in my head, I say, okay, we have this, we have $6 million. We're gonna start with our priority on top. We're gonna go down to the, to the wants and the things we, we could do without, and we're gonna fund from the top going down. And that's what you do in, in a household, hopefully, or in, in a business. In the town, these guys give us the budget. This is their wish list. This is what they need to run their department. Like Gary says, in the way that they've been running it already and provide the services that they're providing. This first couple of runs through, in my head, and if I'm wrong, correct me if you guys think different, but we're gonna go through these line by line. We're gonna give them a, a chance to explain what the number means, what it's for. And then we can go back as a group and say, if we're not satisfied with where we are at the end, which is about a mill decrease so far, a little more than that, I've got a bunch of minuses and Xs on all my paperwork and I have suggestions for different things. But we can go back as a board and say, we're gonna cut 5% across the board, or we're gonna cut, you know, I know 10% was thrown out at me, which is devastating for some of these departments. So, nobody's sitting here, well, I'm not for sure, sitting here saying, this is what it is and this is what we're gonna stick with. And when I said, you know, I'm looking at benefits too, like, I'm looking at it like, open enrollment is November 15 to December 15. So, we gotta remain status quo to be fair until then. And then how much are you really gonna save? Because then you've got departments you have to give a raise to. Those are all numbers we have to tackle as a whole together, and this is not gonna happen with these discussions tonight. I don't know if that helps you. I, in my mind, I, I don't feel like a mill is enough. But as we go through, there are things that I've seen and one or two that I questioned Gary about today that we don't need on here. So, we can, you know, because there was money left from last year that didn't roll over and so, I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying like, oh, let's just pass this and it's all good, but we have to understand what each number is and then we can, I don't know. Does that help?
It does help, but, but my understanding of any budget, be it in your personal home, for the town, personal business, that you started ground zero and you build from there. All right. What's priority? Well, in this area of the country, your fuel costs for, for heating of your buildings. Then you go to your insurance and you build from there. Governor LaPage ran his budget like that, and he's the only governor that's left the sum of money to the state, the way he did.
Dan, I understand, Dan, but, but, but at this point, I mean, we need, what we're doing is we're, we're looking at this budget right now.
This is a learning process.
It's not, we're, we're not, you know, I think we all understand how a budget works. I mean...
Well, I have a question about that.
So, at this point, do we have anything else to say? Gary, did you have anything?
I just wanna, I just wanna make a point of clarification on, on previous administration, state administration and ready day funds. And I wanna make a point, which is a very important point, and it's something that had very, very impactful on state, local municipalities like Madawaska. Revenue sharing in the state of Maine has been rated by the state of Maine over the last decade. It started before Mr. LaPage, okay, and that continued. Madawaska and its peak was getting about $800,000 of revenue sharing a year to a low of just three years ago of $237,000, okay? And through our advocacy, through the legislative politics committee that I sit on and MMA and hounding our elected officials in Augusta to get revenue sharing funded back to 5% as is statutory required. Okay, we went down to two, two or two and a half percent of, of sales tax, okay? And so, the town of Madawaska, I, I think, I, I, if you would just bear with me for one second, I wanna see if I can paint a picture for this town, for you folks, what happened over a decade, okay? The mill, the, the financial hardship of the mill, the decline of paper, the recession of '08 through, through 2010, the slashing of revenue sharing. All that time, the town's mill rate didn't go up. They stayed. The school was an expectation that the school and the town would absorb. And the gate, and the mill got a reduction in taxes, and the town didn't increase in their tax bill, and the town maintained the mill rate. All while receiving less money from the state of Maine. You can only imagine for a second the services that we provide that are also essential, cost money to run. And where do we cut? We cut capital. We cut funding equipment. We cut roads because that's where the big money is. And so, I, I think it's important to know that revenues are coming back up, okay? That it, it's not fair to say things like that, okay? Because this town has taken a hit, like many other towns, on revenue sharing that has had a significant impact on town budgets for a decade, okay? We fought so hard to get this back and we're, and we're making, we're making progress. And COVID slapped us in the head and, and we're still better than last year for revenue sharing. So, I, I wish we could just do our, our budget process here and leave the state and federal politics out of this. This is us, this is our town. We have a job to do here, and what's going on elsewhere is nothing to do with Madawaska. We can control what we control right here. Thank you.
Well, if, 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 if we're gonna leave out all the political whatever at the state level, let's build our budget disregarding revenue sharing and build our budget on what we know is coming in and not something that Santa Claus is gonna bring to us.
I'm gonna make a quick comment with that, Dan. When you say that, you're, you're, you're actually saying that I wanna raise the town taxes. You are actually saying, yes, you are. You're saying that we are, we're not gonna consider the revenue sharing, which is really what's, what's reducing our taxes. And if you're saying, I'm not gonna count that, then all of a sudden, you do have a shortfall. You are gonna have to raise taxes.
Only because we have overspent.
Well, that's, that's an opinion, Dan. And, and yes, that's an opinion. Yes, it is. It's an opinion at this point.
Okay.
So, I, I don't wanna go any further with this, but at this point, that's what you're saying. All right. Any other issues on this article?
Well, we're going through Kevin's budget. So Kevin, if you would, line by line, please.
Okay, I just wanted to add that the insurance from last year to this year in our department was $6,481 increase. It wasn't specified here, just to let you know. Next is operating expenses. State auction, we've cut that out a couple of years ago. Books and periodicals stayed the same. It's been the same for quite a while. Safety equipment and clothing, $3,000, hasn't changed. Contracted services went down $5,000.
Can you remind me what those were?
As far as...
What other contracted services that we're paying for?
Contracted services are the hollow river gravel, snow, anything that we contract, we rent equipment, there's stuff to do, work. Next is employee physicals, $1,200. Next is the parking lot lease, is $1,400.
I can elaborate on that. The parking lot lease, the town has a two, a lease agreement with Ann Daigle for the parking lot behind the funeral home, behind the town office. And that, and historically, the story on that was that provided additional parking for, for businesses and employees in the town. That is a year-to-year lease. We had, prior to me getting here, the lease had been renewed with, with Ms. Daigle. The town has an option on that for right of first refusal if the town wanted to purchase or she wanted to sell. It looked like it was gonna sell last year. We were approached to admit for an offer. The board decided then that they weren't interested in the parking lot. So, we refused and we thought the sale went through, but in fact, we thought there was somebody else interested in the property. I failed to mention that. But in the end, there was no sale and we still have one year left in this lease agreement. So, we are contractually obligated for this year for that parking lot lease agreement. And the board, it is up to board in future years whether or not they wanna continue to utilize that.
Okay, next is license permits and certifications, $1,000. And that's for our gravel pit permit and then our permit to haul gravel from the river and other little permits. Hostage, $100, or $100. Printing and advertising, $500. Travel and training, $2,000. Next would be office supplies is $750.
Kevin, if I may, because, you know, there are people listening too, if you would, at the, at the bottom of that, like department of 35, that section 35, just kinda list what the grand total for operating expenses in that section and reflect back on what it was last year. For instance, your, your bottom line here is $64,400.
Last year was $69,650. This year is $64,400. Next would be office supplies, $750. General supplies, $30,000. Janitorial supplies, $2,200. Street supplies, $9,000, and that stayed the same since last year and quite a few years before then. Next would be, and that's for $41,950. Next would be electricity, $7,500. Telephone and internet is $3,500, stayed the same since last year. Sewer is $1,340. It's gone up $300 since last year, but that's due to increase of water usage at the garage. Next would be heating fuel. Last year was $17,000. This year, they must've got a better rate because it's down to $12,000.
Oh, Kevin, I'll elaborate for you on that. We lucked out when we went out to bids for heating oil. The town of Madawaska and the school and the water district combined, purchasing power, and we do an RFP to the heating dealers locally. We put out the RFP right before the Saudis went into that, that price war with OPEC, and the price went really, really down. The day that we locked in was the best day. And so, we, we ended up locking in at a dollar 74 per gallon. And so, we benefited from that tremendously. That's an example of having a hard number that we didn't have before.
We still have the, the same, the same heating, the same furnace over there.
Yes. But now, since we spoke the last time, our heat exchanger between the bus garage and the town garage, the bearings have all let go and it's, it's about to fall off. It's all rotted up. So, I've shut down that section and we've left it like that. We're not heating right now. And we don't have hot water, so we're just getting by until we figure out what we're gonna do with that.
Okay.
Other than the buses in that area of the garage, is, is there any justifiable need of heat in that? You people work on equipment in that portion of the building?
I've got three bays that are plows and the loaders parking, and the last two are the school departments.
Does the school department furnish anything toward that?
No.
Well, I believe they should. If they want heated buses, other than that, I think we could leave their buses right up front here.
I, I've mentioned it. We, I've tried, you know, to work together with that, but...
That's something we need to look into.
Okay, so, moving on, next would be water fees, $1,600. That stayed the same. So, our overall went down. It was $25,940. Last year was $30,640. So, we went down probably about $4,000 on that one.
And your utilities?
Yep, the utilities. Next is minor equipment, $1,000. Stayed the same. Repair equipment is $1,000. $2,000 is the total for that one. That stayed the same. It's been the same for quite a while. Next is vehicle and equipment, gas and diesel, is $70,000. It went down $5,000 since last year. Next would be our repair account, is $70,000. It's stayed the same since last year. So, our overall account total is $140,000. It went down $5,000 since last year. Next is general maintenance, sanding gravel, $30,000. It went up $10,000. But what happened was is we used to haul it from the river. And we did a cost analysis, and it was costing a lot more to haul it from the river than it was to buy it, screen it, and deliver it to the garage. So, if you look on our fuel, I figured out that it costs us $5,000 of fuel and oil to go to the river, prepare, haul it to the garage, screen it, and then $5,000 roughly for the contractors and the trucks to haul it back to the garage. So, I reduced $5,000 in each account and I added it to our sanding gravel, so it evens itself out. But in actuality, we gain, we gain about two weeks in the fall that we can do other stuff. And we don't have to worry about hauling and repairing the road and washing all of the US Route 1 and all that maintenance. So, we actually save about two weeks of work and it's a lot better for us because we can do something else. And it's a lot cheaper in cost.
I commend you for figuring that out and implementing that.
Thank you. Next is chemicals, which is salt and magnesium chloride. Stayed the same, $100,000. So, that gives us a total of... Does it say on my paper for that?
Nope.
Okay, it just continues. Okay, sorry. Next one is asphalt and coal patch, $100,000. That stayed the same since last year. They had moved 225 into the other account, into our road reserve.
Gary, is that, I, okay, is that, that, is that the 264 that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think what we'll do...
Sorry, I know I've asked some of these questions already before, but there's some that I couldn't find.
My, my, what I was gonna do, Laurie, is after Kevin was done with his budget, I was gonna basically ask you guys to take a look at your, the capital budget where he has project reserve money in there. In the past, Kevin's paving line was, was out, was basically somewhere in the vicinity of, well, you can see it, was 350. And I think I explained this before. I'll explain it again. Often times when we initiate a project, it's like paving or what, for instance, we incur in spec, and we incur expenses in this fiscal year or in the fiscal year, and we have to end up paying for them in the next. And the auditors, we can't, once we close out the end of the fiscal year, we can't pull expenses back, okay? That year is gone. It's closed. And so, a couple of things. Just to make it easier for, to satisfy that concern, and also by taking those larger projects, like paving, like hundred thousand dollar contracts and, and projects of that nature, or like a $50,000 color replacement on a brook somewheres, those are considered capital outlays, capital projects. And it shouldn't really appear in an operational budget, okay? It should appear in a capitals budget. And when you budget to capital, it's a reserve account. It's for the same purposes. But it goes before the board. If it's approved to be funded for road project reserve account, for instance, the taxpayers will ultimately approve it at a town meeting, or not. If, if they do, the board of selectmen will be the trustee of that expense account, no matter what the fiscal year. So, they can tap into that. Kevin's gonna come to a board meeting. He'll make it aware that it's like, I, I need $25,000 for something that I didn't anticipate for a road project or emergency, road related. Can I, can, can we ask the board for some money out of the road reserve? Absolutely. We put it on an agenda. The board will decide whether or not they wanna fund that project out of that reserve account. So, that's how that changed there. It's, it's, it was flat. It wasn't an increase in taxes or a decrease. We took what is a budgeted amount, because what happens in the budget, in these department budgets, what's left unspent at the end of the year rolls to the undesignated fund. rolls to the undesignated fund. It's gone, it's gone in the sense that, you know, you have to go back to the taxpayers and ask to be able to use that money. And so, um, that's why it makes it hard to pull those project expenses on a closeout fiscal year for projects that Kevin has that started in June, for instance, beginning of June, but we only get the bill, you know, in, in July.
Who makes the decision about excess funds or money left over that rolls over to the undes- undesignated fund?
That's, that's how it is, that's a process?
No, no, that's what I'm asking. Who makes that decision? Who, who decided that? And the reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking, you take like Kevin and his crew. These people work hard, they work long hours, especially in the wintertime. They, they try to save, they try to cut, they cut corners. I've seen a couple of their projects in the shop that they saved this town thousands and thousands of dollars. So what kind of incentive does it give these people to go that over and beyond if their savings is gonna go into a slush fund?
Right. So, to answer your question, and I appreciate that, typically if there's no, everything in the town's business budget, if you will, is defined by an article, there's something that enables that activity to take place. If it's, if it's public works budget, the board could potentially, with the permission of the taxpayers, through an article in the warrant, the town meeting warrant, have the language that would in effect say, shall the voters of the town of Madawaska authorize that the monies left over in the department's budget, like Kevin's for instance, roll over into a, a equipment reserve account or a road repair reserve account? And that would prevent that money from falling out into the undesignated fund. Okay? But that would have to be a reoccurring article every year. It doesn't care, it doesn't carry forward. It's the will of the board at the time. And if it's the will of the board to have language like that, we can certainly put an article in the, in the warrant that would, that would do that. And ultimately, the taxpayers would-
That's been a discussion prior and, and we've addressed that and, and we know that that's an issue. Lori, I mean, any, any, any comments on that, on that issue? I mean, I know-
No, I, I agree, like I have that in my notes too as, as part, like I'm, there's some of this stuff I'm not saying, because we already have talked about it or, or I thought, you know, we're, let's get through all the lines and then we'll discuss, but I, I think he has more than eighty thousand dollars that fell into the general fund, which really, really helps the town, but yet they, they need that money. Like they could fix the furnace and they could do things that they need to do with that money. So my intention at some point is, you know, to make a motion that we do just that for, but then we have to look at the ramification and which departments that we want to do that with, if, if it's gonna be more than just public works.
Would this be a, a, a good time for us to make that motion?
No, I don't think so.
No, no.
I think that we work on the budget.
Yep.
And once we, you know, once we get through this, as I'm, we're working on this, I'm gonna be working on the warrant for the town's business. Obviously, there's a potential interest that we do something like that. So what I'll do is I'll come up with some language, but when, once we get to a point that this board has waited on all the budgets.
Yep.
And the finance committee has waited on all the budgets, then we're ready to go to town meeting, okay? So, but we need to have a board approve the town meeting warrant. Uh, and that's where, through discussions with you like this, I will insert some language into an article to do that, and ultimately, you guys will look at that and say, I like this warrant or this is something I think we should change, or we should add something more, whatever. But at the end of the day, the board will set the warrant for the annual town meeting and all the articles of business.
As we go, I don't know if you're making that on your list, Dan, but I mean, if we make, if we know each item that we're discussing that we want to make sure gets on the warrant, then we can come up at the end and say, okay, well, here's, here's our list, let's discuss them, we, maybe we can have a meeting just for that and-
I just don't want to see this one slip through the cracks. I absolutely want this on the warrant and have this changed. To give an incentive to each and every department in town, to give them an incentive to look to cut, that way they know they have additional money to work with down the road.
Okay. Finance committee, any comments, anything there? Okay, Kev, keep going.
The only thing, the only thing I have to say about that, Doug, real quick is, we want to make sure that we word it correctly so that, and I'm just gonna throw out an example, we say, well, anything in the sanding gravel goes into this reserve fund for vehicles. We want to make sure that we do it on something that doesn't cut the services to the public just because we want to save up for a vehicle next year. Want to make sure that we word it correctly so that they don't have the ability to take, to steal from the sand, pay for the truck.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kevin would never do that.
I know Kevin wouldn't, but-
I just need to make that point.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be for all departments. Are we gonna have slush funds for every department? That's a lot of time of taxpayer money.
Well, I think that's a, it's not a slush fund, but I think it's a discussion we have to have.
Yeah, it's a discussion we're gonna have to have. I mean, it's just a comment that Dan made at this point, but-
I, I don't feel like it needs to be every department.
Yep.
Sorry, I cut you off.
Yep.
It, it is, it is, Ken, but it's also putting money aside for a rainy day. And, and those monies will eventually be used, that's money that would eventually be used-
I think the rainy day has arrived.
For projects that we would, we would have to eventually budget for. So, yes, it is true, it, it's putting money aside for, for expensive projects. But, you know, like Dan said, it also incentivizes the board, the, the departments to be frugal and, and save.
See, that's, that's really my thought too, is like, you know, if you're gonna tell them that the money that they're saving is actually gonna end up staying in their departments, it just kinda makes the ball roll a little bit slower and it, now, the spending gets a little bit less and hopefully, they've got a few bucks at the end of the year. And so, I, I realize that, that those funds are gonna sit there and they are tax dollars, but yet, I still feel the incentive is better than, than not.
I just wanted to tell, like, to tell Kevin, the, the incentive for that is not to put money away. In my, in my eyes, I can't predict winters, I cannot predict breakdowns. And what happens is, is that if we have a catastrophic breakdown of a major piece of equipment, we're gonna have to go to a special town meeting to ask for money. This way, if we have it in our account, or if we have a rough winter and I don't have to come back and say, well, I went ten percent or twenty percent over my budget because of the winter, I can pull it out of that. But if I have a good winter, I can put it away for, if something happens.
No, I understand, but I'm saying if every department does it, that's a lot of money.
I don't see that something happening in every department, that's-
Like I said, this year was a good year, we, I finished with eighty-six thousand, but I've seen years as low as fifteen, twenty. And I've seen, I think, one or two years that we were upside down because we had a big winter.
Go ahead, Lori.
I, I just wanted to comment that, you know, like it wasn't in my head to do, think across the board, but to really look at it carefully, but I think we know and as we get further in these discussions, it'll probably come out again, but, um, and, and this is no, I'm not saying, oh, previous administration did this and people did that and it just, you know, the, the times were hard for a while and things happened, but we know, we need a fire truck, there's no money for that. We need, uh, the grader was having some issues, there's the sprinkler system at the wreck and you start adding everything up and, and there's, where's the savings of, you know, we, we're like a million dollars that we need? So somehow, we have to get creative to start getting this back. And like you said, if he has equipment that breaks down to be able to replace that, so we're not borrowing money and paying interest to buy equipment. That's, you know, kind of, I'm not saying I'm right, I'm just, that's my thinking. I wasn't saying across the board, everybody should keep all their money.
Hopefully, hopefully, the, this board would be able to see through that. I, I, you know, again, how easy could that be? You know? And I, and I understand that also, I mean, it, it could easily be-
If you wanna, if you wanna move up your department, move it every year.
Well, I don't think that's Kevin's problem right now.
No, I don't either. Kev, can we, can we keep going?
Yep.
All right.
Next is signs, fifteen hundred. Uh, stayed the same. Construction materials, sixty-five hundred, stayed the same. Uh, oils and lubricants, eighty-five hundred. That stayed the same. Uh, tool account, two thousand, the same as last year. Uh, guard rail account, five hundred dollars, it stayed the same. Sidewalk account was twelve hundred, stayed the same. Uh, road striping, I bought it down, two thousand dollars from seven thousand to five thousand because the roads in the back are so, they're so rough that I don't think that I should be putting down paint because we won't be able to put the line straight, so. We'll hold off for that until we do decide to hot top and then we can deal with that then. Uh, total is two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred. And that's gone up, uh, since the year before of two forty-eight, seven hundred, but that was at ten thousand that I told you we shifted around, that's the difference in that. Next is the building and repairs, five thousand dollars a year. And that's usually for a garage door and some minor maintenance to fix up the garage. For a budget total of, this year is one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and two dollars. It's gone up seventeen hundred and eighty-one dollars since last year. And I have no problem, and if they want to keep it straight, you know, and flatlined, I have, I have a couple places that I've tagged, five hundred here, five hundred there, that I could put it back, so it's zero, zero. That's, that's what they're asking us to do.
Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
When we see figures roll over, like you're showing us here, does that mean that, that you never, you never expensed or never had expenses to meet that particular figure, so it's a good figure for you? Is that, you, you've never gone over those figures that you're presenting to us from last year, so you're carrying that same figure over this year? How, how do you, how do you assume those figures? How do you get to those figures?
I go by the figures from the year before and-
If you didn't, if you didn't exceed that expense, then you just carry it forward?
I try to-
Good, that's fine, thank you.
Yep. And, and there's some of them, I'll add, the, the costs have gone up two to three times a year and we absorb it in our operational budget. We try to do it as much as we can to less interrupt services and possible for the taxpayers. And sometimes it's hard because I'm not the most favorite person when I do this, but we gotta do, we gotta do to get through this.
If you would, I think, um, once you guys are done asking questions, or you guys, I'd like to take you to the back, capital's budget, if you will, capital purchases and reserves. The second page from the back. There's an expansion there, reserve account that's tied to, to the, uh, public works, that I want you to draw their attention to. You'll notice in there that, uh, we're carrying, get my bearings here. If you look down at the bottom worksheet on that page, you see the road project reserve account. We're basically carrying forward that same amount from last year, two, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's to pay for road preparations, cover replacements, uh, paving, uh, road project reserves, just, just that. That was money that was shifted out of Kevin's budget before, I talked about that earlier. Uh, so we could, the board would have flexibility to spend that in one fiscal year or the next. So, and also to build the reserve.
So, just to, um, I guess make the point clear, I, when, when you had mentioned that Dave was asking us to keep one mill and always move it forward, that, that, well, this is a full, right, you have right now three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that's dedicated to the asphalt and the roads and the, so it's more, it's, it's more, much more than a mill that they're, they've been carrying every year. You just have to put those two numbers together.
Which two numbers?
The, the two sixty-four and the one hundred from the first page of his budget. So it comes out to three sixty-four. I just know you were looking for that number. And I was super, and then I, oh, okay, let's add this in. Make sense?
Yep. Good? Okay, Gary, anything?
What else you got, Kev? You look like you have some stuff to say.
I just wanted to add that, uh, the budget that I presented here, there is no extras. There's no room for any major breakdowns. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, if we put that on the hot top, will get us three miles of hot top in about thirty to forty miles that needs attention. Our grader has not been touched and it's, it's gonna happen, it's a ticking time bomb because every time we see the CAT technician, he's done, I think, one or two this summer, they had less hours and hours and, and they blew apart. We're gonna try to ride it out again, but if that lets go when we need it, we're, we're in dire trouble. And then also, the only thing else I ask is that if the taxpayers allow it, that the remaining amount of money that we save at the end of the year without sacrificing any services, that puts back into our account. So if something does happen out of the ordinary, that we're able to draw out of that without, you know, going into general accounts or asking to borrow money or stuff like that.
Coming back to the grader, the grader, I know, is one of your bigger pieces of machinery.
Yes.
It's greatly needed.
Yes.
Number one, the technician that services your grader, there are warning signs that these technicians pick up on when you're about to have a major blowout. Have they picked up on any of these signs? Have they notified us of any of that?
For the past, I want to say, and don't hold me to this, but six or seven years, there's parts in the hydraulic, there's pieces of metal that we've been picking up that's been jamming our servos. And it's, I think, I'm not sure which gear it is, but every so often, we find one that wedged in there, that, that the grader falls in neutral, we go change that servo, there's filings and there's, uh, big pieces of steel. Last year, we took apart the transmission filter and we looked at it with a flashlight and it was full of brass filings. And they said, we have no idea how this is still running. It's got sixteen thousand hours, I think fifteen or sixteen thousand.
What year is it?
It's never been touched. It's a ninety-five.
Do you have any idea what kind of money we'd be looking at if this would indeed go on us?
I got a price from them. It's gonna range between, and that's a complete overhaul. Because they say that if you gotta do the transmission, they recommend you do the hydraulic pump, the front assist and the other pump and the motor while everything's apart, because that's all I'm behind. Another CAT certified, warranted, is one fifty to two hundred thousand. And a brand new grader is almost four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand.
Now, Kevin? This is a, this is how old this machine?
Ninety-five.
A ninety-five, twenty-five years old?
I, in my, in my eyes, I don't want a new one because new one has DEF and all kinds of electronics. We have half of the grader parts upstairs and when something goes wrong, the mechanics know where to exactly go to get that back up and running in minimal time. So what happens is, if we change that, we can no longer service it because we'll need a computer and all kinds of software. And I don't think that, for what we do with it, I don't think we need a new one. If we refurbish it, we'd be good for another ten, fifteen years minimum. And by then, we'll deal with that when the time comes.
And Kevin, uh, you're, you're talking about your, your, your department and the garage staff there. This, this public works mechanic's team that's there, we don't farm out hardly anything. These guys do all the work in-house and they can do pretty much anything. So I think that taxpayers are getting their money's worth with, with, with this team, this department that's there.
We service all the departments. Uh, we help as much as we can. The only time that we don't help them is when we gotta get into computers or programs or software. But I would say sixty to seventy percent of the time, everything is done in-house.
So Ken, your point is well taken, but, uh, you don't have to worry about Kevin.
So Gary, my question is, I know the town reserve fund is quite low, but can we work something out through his budget where we can pay for the repairs of that vehicle through the reserve account and then budget from his budget to pay that back into the reserve fund over two years, three years, or?
Well, the reserve accounts that were created as we fund them, they were created for like road project reserve. We do have an equipment reserve account.
Yes, it was one ninety a year. I don't know if we're still funding that.
We haven't funded that in a while and I think, I think, I don't have the, the GL in front of me, but I think there's about twenty grand in the equipment reserve in the ballpark of that. So, uh, yes, you can fund the reserve account for those kinds of, uh, expensive repair projects.
Yeah.
But that's something that, you know, we would have to add in, not necessarily in here, but in our capital budget for, for them.
No, just to, I mean, to address it before it breaks down, because- No, just to, I mean, to address it before it breaks down, because...
And I think that with the guys that we have in the shop, that we could probably help out the people that are gonna do it to try to save some money. I don't know how much we'd save, but I definitely could tell you that it would be a noticeable amount. If we can separate it and take out the transmission or the process in-house, so that way they can just send it to Mango or Rure or wherever CAT does it, there's definitely a labor savings there.
Yeah, I think if you could look into that and if we could find out a way that we can incorporate that so we can fix it before it ends up costing us twice that when it does, you know, get stuck on the side of the road somewhere.
We've gotten figures right from...
Yeah.
Uh, one of the guys from CAT, he came up and uh he gave us an estimate. And he says in order for them to do like a true reading, I think uh they charge, it's like a fifteen hundred dollar fee, but they tell you, they go through the whole thing and they tell you exactly.
Okay.
I think Twin Rivers had a payloader done last year like that. And as far as I'm, I know, I think it's held up pretty good and it's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the rest of you think, but I, I definitely think we should address this before we have to pay twice that next year or the year after.
Problem with that is, is that that would need to be done in the springtime, because that'll be out for a month or two.
Yeah.
So Gary, when would, when would we address that, Gary?
So, it's a good question. You can, you can roll the dice and tackle this investment, call it an investment that you need to fund. If you do it in one budget cycle, to get, to give him one fifty to get that thing refurbished and under warranty, it's, your one fifty is, is almost half a mil.
Do we need to put this on an agenda for a select meeting for discussion?
Yeah, I mean, so, there's two ways that you, there's a couple of ways that you can tackle this. You can tell Kevin, you know, we're gonna give you a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in your equipment budget right here, right in this budget. Kevin's gonna spend it uh to do it. Uh, or you can fund it into reserves, like capital reserves, if you will, like Jason was suggesting. And if we put, no matter where we put that expense, it's, it would be an increase to the budget, uh, his budget. Three hundred fifty thousand dollars of spending equals about one mil of taxes, so a hundred fifty, you know, you're in the vicinity of half a mil of an increase associated with that. If you do it over two years, you split that, you split that cost over two years, if you're funding it to the reserve like that.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking for, maybe a three-year split. If you think the repairs will last, let's say, three years, if we can break it down to a three-year funding, but allow him to, to fix it in the spring when he, when he needs it.
Can we get three more years out of that before we get the money to actually do it?
I don't, I'm not a gambling man.
No, I'm saying like if we can fix it this spring, but somehow take, you know, I know the town as a whole has reserve budget. If we can pay for it now and then over the next three years reimburse that, that place we took it.
Our, our, our undesignated fund will not support us going, the only place we could get that money is, is out of the undesignated fund and our, our, our undesignated fund will not support, we can't draw from the undesignated fund. We got wiped out by, by the Twin Rivers abatement. Uh, and so that's not an option for us. So I think that from a planning, I think it's important for you guys to know as a board, uh, and the finance committee, from a planning perspective, uh, these large capital projects are, you can fund those different ways. You can fund them through dedicated reserve accounts, okay? Put the money there, once we have the money, the town used to do that years ago, way, way back, pre-two thousand and eight, you know, way, in the good days. Or you can, you can, you can fund it like through reserves, chip away at it, finally we have the money, we make the purchase. If that's, if the schedule allows, if the equipment will hold up for that long. If your plow trucks, plow trucks are on a fifteen, sixteen year replacement cycle, well, if you budget to reserve to do that, then you have the money and I think, I think what's important, can I take to heart your, 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 your thought about holding the taxpayers' money? But reserve accounts do a couple of things. The one most important thing that they do is it stabilizes the mill rate over a period of time. So if you get, for instance, an anomaly of an expense and all of a sudden, well, we didn't have the money to pay for that, well, either we're gonna raise all that money in that business year, if you will, and jack up the mill rate to pay for that, or we spread it out over so many years to finance it. And so reserve accounts, yes, they are putting money aside and is holding the taxpayers' money, but it also helps to stabilize that mill rate over a period of time and I think that's, I think taxpayers appreciate a stable mill rate.
So with, and, and I understand that the, the, the undesignated fund, it doesn't have much money in it, but we know now we're getting eighty thousand dollars going into there at the end of this budget or this fiscal year. So if we take that eighty thousand dollars plus ten thousand out of the undesignedated and then try to work on getting fifty thousand dollars into this year's budget, so we don't bring up the mill rate, you know, too much, if any. You know, I, my goal is just to get that truck, 'cause I know if we don't get it this year, it's gonna cost us a lot more money.
I just wanted, before we, we move forward on that, I'd like to do some more homework.
Yeah.
To see if there's other ways that we can do this with a cost savings.
Yeah.
I just, I wanna, I wanna get two or three different like options.
Right, definitely.
You know, I wanna talk to both scots and see what we can do in-house, what's absolutely necessary that, that needs to be done, what we can do to get by for five years, or I just wanna weigh out all our options.
Uh huh.
So if I can get away with not doing the whole shebang for another five or ten years till we're in a better position, well, maybe that's the route we need to take.
Yeah.
So I just, before, and I will look into that this week. So I'll try to get something sooner than later to you guys, different options, you know, as best as I can to, so that way we can look into that, what's affordable for us. By no means do I wanna bring up any mill rate.
No. No.
Just one final question there, I mean, if, 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 if we were going to attempt to do something uh in, uh, uh, Jason's thoughts or theories here, do you think that piece of machinery can last two years? So if we were gonna set some money aside for this year and next to get to that hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand that you're saying, I guess really the, the thought is it, do we have at least a little window here to play with, or, or are we just saying can't, can't even give you that?
In my opinion, that should have been done two years ago, but so far, knock on wood, it's been going. You know as well as I do, it ain't gonna let go in the summer, it's gonna let go in the worst snowstorm possible.
The iron filings and the hydraulic pump is a true tell sign. It's a red flag, it's like, I'm coming to get you.
Get it done, get it fixed.
That's why I just wanna weigh out to see what...
Sooner than later.
What different routes I can take. If I can get away with just doing one piece and, you know, and by time, maybe that'll be the option. Most cost efficient way to get things moving. Because we have no way, if that lets go, that's our main piece of equipment for snow removal. Because our wing is the only one in the state of Maine that's upside down. And nobody else would have a spare grader with that setup. And we've gotten by with the plow truck, but the thing is, we don't have, while we're out plowing, all the trucks are, are being used, so we don't, we can't say that we're gonna be picking up snow and, you know, doing it with the, the trucking, 'cause everything's all on the floor and block.
Okay.
Thank you.
So with that said, uh, we've gone through Kevin's budget, um, we've asked questions, we've tried to explain things that, uh, to the best we could. You guys as a finance committee, uh, how many are you, how many members are you again? You were seven, so you don't have a quorum, okay.
They have a quorum with me, but I'm, I'm not gonna vote for, I mean, if you're asking for a vote for like the insurance budget or anything like that, I'm not gonna vote with vote, so it's, they need four. But Chris, you wanna hold your own meetings anyway, as a group and do a vote, or?
All right, well, this is kind of in the same file, offices, stuff is all fairly reasonable. And then if we get to a particular budget, we all were, raised to the word of discussion beyond it, we get too long in that line without a quorum. Our hands are tied to that.
I don't know how to address this now. I mean, we'll have to revisit this one way or the other.
So I...
Laurie, go ahead.
Are you looking for a vote on the public works?
No, no.
Right now?
No, no, just, just an agreement that it, it, it appears like we're all in favor of it. Not necessarily that I need a vote at this point, but...
We, we can't do that, because we agreed to look at the um benefits, not that I wanna cut people's benefits, but they have concerns and that's part of this budget. So that, like, like, let's at, at least do the due diligence and talk those numbers out.
Yep.
So that they see this is, you know...
So really, I mean, having said that Laurie, that really will, 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 um, there's no way that we're going to be able to expedite this at all, 'cause we're gonna have to come back and revisit this again with the benefits. As far as I can tell right now, we're gonna have to come back and, and do this again.
Do the ones that Gary suggested we do, like the insurance one can't change, the, what a debt service can't change.
No. We can do those, I think that um, it, it's too bad that we don't have that insurance discussion before these meetings. These, these budget discussions take place because, you know, um, they're, they have the potential to impact this budget up or down. Um, and I really feel that these employees deserve, you have the benefit of uh, sit down with this board to discuss the, the benefits package um before a decision is made on benefits. So I think that, you know, I, I, I'm just taking a read here that there, there seems to be an interest in trying to move things along wherever we can and where we can't, we can't. We are under a, a time crunch uh to get a budget passed. There's a lot of steps, a lot of procedures, a lot of things that have to happen to get this to town meeting. And so I, I don't know if there's an opportunity to look at the budget and, and leave the, the benefits part of it out and say, we're gonna have a discussion about health insurance? If that's what this board wants to have, the health insurance uh discussion with all the departments at some point in time? And then we could come back and plug those numbers into the budget. Is there a way that, that would satisfy this board and the finance committee?
Just for clarification, I just asked a question about the benefit package and the, those particular benefits, just as an example.
Well, Manon has those, those questions too. She wants to know how much.
Okay, all right.
Like, she needs that, they need the actual data in front of her to...
Okay, all right.
And then the, and the other thing is, there's a concern about the budget as a whole. And, and now you want, like, this is the first time they go through this budget, you're not letting them go home and sleep on anything, you're not letting them ask questions. And then you're saying, let's vote by department, and then we're gonna get to the whole and then they're gonna say, well, let's cut by ten percent. Well, we can't, we've already voted, we have to go back and vote again on public, not that I wanna cut by ten percent, I just, I'm just, you know, what if they say two percent? Once they look at the revenues and, and everything else, I mean, I, I'm sorry that, that you guys wanna brush this through, but I, not... That didn't come out right. I, I, that didn't come out right, I don't feel like you wanna brush it through, I just feel like, you know, you have board members with concerns about the budget as a whole, we're gonna start doing their first pass through and now you want them to vote, it's not fair.
I don't, I don't know that we're looking for a vote here Laurie, we're not looking for a vote. We're just looking for a general consensus, if, if everything here looks okay with you or, or if we have to come back and revisit it. I'm not, I'm not saying any more than that. Um, from the finance committee, I mean, any, any comments there, anything else, I mean, other than what Chris just said? No?
No, I, yeah, I, you know, without a quorum, I, we can't even discuss, I mean, we did discuss a lot of stuff, without a quorum, I can't say here and say that it's approved or, or supported by the finance, which is a budget, and the quorum, and so, in order to give every, you know, this committee a chance, I gotta give them the information and give them an opportunity to hear that out. You know, I've, hopefully we can move some things along to say, I know the times, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, we got questions, we got questions, and we gotta get the answer before we move on, it's simple stuff.
Yep.
Right, so and, and those questions aren't coming from this committee, they're coming from the board. And this committee can't make a decision if we don't have that solid number, whatever it may be, it may change, it may not change. So if I tell you that we, you know, if we had a quorum here today, we said we support that budget and then you go back and you change numbers based off whether it's health benefits or anything else, that's...
Yeah, no, I don't think we'd come back behind you like that though, but, but anyway, I mean, um, so we're just gonna keep going the way we are and uh, we're gonna address the different budgets that we have in front of us tonight and uh, I don't see any other way than coming back to and revisiting these.
So how does this end up? The, the plan is to come back to it?
We're gonna come back to it. Yeah, 'cause they, they're not even a quorum, so we have to.
In your interest, you're better off getting through this with it, since you have new board members, get through that, get, let them understand what's going on. As long as they, they want to contribute this information, we all admire it, sure.
Right.
You gotta get in that opportunity.
Right.
And then, you know, we can meet amongst ourselves at some point, see where we're at, you know, maybe there's some same concerns on the, on the finance committee that echo the same that you have there, I don't know that yet, so...
But Manon, barring the um, the benefits, are you okay with the rest?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm just, as an overhaul of all the budgets, the health insurance.
Ju- just so that we know where we stand, 'cause um...
That's a major expense, the health insurance.
No, I think everything looks good too, the only concern is, is the vehicle, but, yeah.
I do have another question though. Is, is there one we can lease, the particles, like from Paltier, is there anybody else around, like CAT or?
No, 'cause what happens, our wing is on the opposite side everywhere else. So we do it with the truck, but we're rolling upside down with the truck, that's very dangerous. If, if, if we've done it before with the truck and that was just to get by and it doesn't clean as good and it doesn't work as good. But we're the only town, I think, in the state of Maine with a left-hand wing. We gotta be different, I guess.
Nothing wrong with that.
It's worked, it's worked the best for us and it's real hard.
Okay, well, are we all set with Kevin?
Yep.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Kev. Article three to consider to Department three hundred, ambulance and department budget.
How you doing? I'll lead off for Eric a little bit here, just kinda talk about the ambulance department. The ambulance department, it's a twenty-four hour, seven day a week operation. We now service three communities. We are in our second um renewal, our second three-year term, if you will, our contract with the communities of Frenchville and Senegat individually. Uh, we served them for the past few years. Uh, we also just picked up Grand Isle um as well, so we have a very broad area. Uh, we have a fantastic team, uh, they're highly regarded uh in their work and they provide fantastic service, reliable service to our residents in our budding municipalities. As we work through this budget, um, they, they, they are a revenue generator, if you will. And their enabling article is that we budget a certain amount of revenue for them every year. So when we look on the expense side, the last page of your budget packet is the revenue side, okay? And so, um, what we, what we have done in the past with the department in respect to revenues is any excess revenue above what we projected that we're gonna receive uh in billing for, for services rolls into their equipment reserve. And their equipment reserve is, somewhere is in the vicinity of about seven hundred thousand dollars. And so that's good before replacement of a fire, of a, a new vehicle.
That would buy a grader.
Or, you know, uh, just expensive equipment like stretchers and those are like thirty thousand dollar items. And so, uh, fortunately, the ambulance departments, uh, because they are somewhat self or partially funded, uh, have a healthy reserve. The, taking on the additional communities, the town back, that was before I got here, I was actually in one of the municipalities who uh picked up the, who joined with Madawaska for the service. The, uh, being able to pick up more communities has helped our bottom line. The ambulance department has long been subsidized by the taxpayers. It's no different from any other ambulance department. For instance, they don't, Ambulance Service Inc. doesn't generate enough revenue to pay for their services. They have to bill each of the service communities that they provide services to for the difference, for their shortfall. And that's because the reimbursement rates just aren't there. But thankfully, uh, through acquiring, uh, broadening our service area, uh, we do charge them a uh, what is essentially, um, we bill them for... What is essentially, um, we bill them for their average calls per year. We know what those average call is, number of calls. Uh, what the cost that we're now gonna get reimbursed for. Okay, so when we project that out, and that's what we charge them, uh, Frenchville, Senegat, and Grand Isle, for instance, to be ready for them to provide that service. We pick up the revenue from those calls, and that helps us. So, the town, when they picked up Frenchville and Senegat back then, three, something, three and a half years ago, uh, they did make an investment in, in having another ambulance and, and staff. We didn't have to add any more staff or equipment to, to pick up Grand Isle. We were good, we made sure, we talked with the director, and he talked with his staff to make sure that we weren't spreading them too thin. Uh, and so, uh, like I said, being able to service those other communities is, has helped our bottom line. So, well, what we've done, uh, just to kinda, before we lead off into the budget expense side here for the ambulance department, uh, their reserve account has, has. Epped it, flowed, or I should say grown, and, and it's been drawn from, for purchases. The board has in the past, it was not done last year, but the board has in the past, when the, when the ambulance reserve got healthy enough, utilized some of their revenue to offset their own budget. This budget right here does exactly that. So, not last year, but the year before, a hundred, the, the town, uh, the board put it before the taxpayer, so the townspeople vote to take a hundred fifty thousand out of their reserve to reduce their operating budget, and reduce what we need to ask the taxpayers for taxes. That was done the year before because the, the balance was healthy enough, the board felt that the number that was in there would support that transaction. It wasn't not done last year, uh, but I think that it is, it can support that this year. So, part of the revenue, the additional revenue in your budget, that's helping to drive the mill rate down, is taken from the reserve account to, to reduce their operating budget. That being said, ambulance salaries and wages, um, flat funded from last year. Uh, can talk about mid-state retirement. Uh, our share, uh, of mid-state retirement is at twenty-three thousand. Health insurance went up to one sixteen. It's compared to one oh five nine ninety-five. Social Security at twenty-four eight eighty-seven, and Medicare at fifty-eight twenty, the same as last year. So, a net increase of, of, on the benefit side of about ten thousand dollars, uh, over last year. And my notes here show that we have, uh, six full-time and twelve thirteen part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. From there, do you guys have any questions on, on, um, that? And I'm gonna hand off to Eric.
I'm just gonna question.
Yep.
Do any of these part-time have health insurance coverage?
Uh, that's a good question.
What was the question?
If they had any healthcare coverage, the part-time?
No, it's full-time only.
Only full-time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, uh, operating expenses, admin, admin and billing services, that is our billing company that we use to do all our billing out of Presque Isle. That's, that's what that is all for. Clothing, safety equipment, two thousand dollars, that's, that's, that's pretty much self-explanatory for, for clothing.
Eric, if you would, at least, you know, refer back to last year that you, that's an, that number's unchanged?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, those two numbers are unchanged. Um, contracted services, uh, specifically with, uh, ASI out of Fort Kent, they do send us a bill if we should have to use them for mutual aid. Uh, we do have some days, sometimes where our ambulances are out, we have to use them to, to cover a third call, uh, that does happen, and they, they send us a bill as well, so. We have nine thousand in there, that is unchanged from last year. Uh, contracted services with, uh, the Arista County Sheriff's Department is thirteen thousand, that again is unchanged as well.
Thirteen five? Thirteen five? Thirteen thousand five?
Thirteen, uh, I got thirteen thousand. Is it five? Had you guys updated the?
Here, I'm gonna give you.
Thirteen five is the proposed, yep.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yep.
That's not part of the county tax that we're paying, that they're covering services for sheriff?
We pay that directly to the Arista County Sheriff's Office. That's for dispatch services. Um, when the mill, uh, decided that it was a liability for them, for, for Bescom, I think it was, um, they basically told us, they gave us plenty of notice that, you know, we wanna move dispatch out of, out of here. Uh, we, uh, we had two options, one was the mid-state police and one was the Arista County SO. Uh, mid-state police is, I don't, was not even an option, I think, that we could have pursued. It would've been a lot more money, and I don't even know if it was, uh, possible in the timeframe that we needed to, them to be on board.
Okay.
But I will say that, Eric, if you wanna just elaborate, uh, going, and I think all the departments that utilize, uh, the service from the county, them, fire, and put PD.
Yeah.
Uh, really like, um, the Arista County SO because everything falls into their database, and it just, Eric, can you speak to it?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, wh- when they call, uh, when they call us, I mean, they start, when they call a card, so everything, times are, are kept track of, where we're going is kept track of. They know, and, and of course, when they get dispatched, when they get a call from nine one one, they get, they get all that information, so they know where we're going. They know GPS coordinates if we need to know that stuff. Uh, and they're, they have their protocols, they're always one step ahead of us. If, if they, they know it's a big event, uh, they're, they're already calling for, for other ambulances if we need it, uh, and they're really good at what they do, uh, not, not just for us, but for the fire and, and for the police department. Everything on the radios is all recorded, so if ever we need to go back and get any information backlogs, it's all there. Uh, we can actually log on to the, to the computers ourselves here. Uh, we have an account, and we can go and look at our, all our radio transmissions, everything like that. It's, it's a really great system. It's been good for us because it's just, it really made our jobs a lot easier, knowing we have a reliable dispatch job there, so. It's nice that, when you key that mic, somebody's gonna answer, so it's nice to have that comfort.
Is that a, is that a, a monthly fee that comes out to thirteen five, or?
Annual.
It's an annual fee?
That's annual, yeah. Good. Next, dues, subscriptions, memberships, that's if we'd have any memberships or dues that we have to pay to, uh, like, Arista Region Five EMS, sometimes we have dues to pay for with them. Uh, or yearly, I should say, we do. Uh, license permits, certification, that's specifically for, I mean, EMS, we have to be licensed as a service, and we do have to provide, uh, fees for that. Uh, eighteen hundred, that is unchanged. Postage, uh, fifty dollars, unchanged. Printing and advertising, that's, uh, one fifty, or fifty, excuse me, I wrote that down. Uh, we don't really have anything printed, anything like that anymore. Advertising, I can advertise for free through Region Five EMS, I can advertise for free in, in MCC if we need, you know, job posts, uh, and, uh, so that's what we've been utilizing for any advertising and like that, so. Travel training, uh, forty-two hundred dollars, that is unchanged. Your total was fifty-three thousand one hundred. Increased from fifty-two thousand seven hundred, that was for the five hundred dollar increase for the dispatch.
Can we come back to the very first part of that, the administration and billing service?
Excuse me, yep.
Twenty-three thousand? What, what does that entail?
This entails a company that, that basically, they take all our run sheets, they, they assign it codes, there's coding involved, uh, as to what level of services these patients have received, and then they do the billing for this, and then they send the bill out, they, to either to the insurance companies, and whatever the insurance company, uh, says, okay, this is what we're gonna pay, the patient has to pay this out of pocket, so that then they, they turn around and sell, send the bills to patients as well. Um, there's a lot behind that because they have a lot of, uh, classes and trainings, and they have to keep up with that as well, uh, in, in order to stay afloat with all the billing, uh, verbiage and all that stuff.
On average, how many calls would you respond to in a year's time?
Eight to nine hundred.
Including all the other towns?
Yeah. Yeah.
The billing department also handles collections.
They handle collections, yes, and, uh, a good thing with, with having an independent billing too is, uh, if there's any mistakes that are made, the town can't really be held accountable for it. Uh, cuz penalties can be quite, quite severe if.
Are there, are there any other groups that do this kind of work, that offer these services?
Locally around here, not that I'm aware of, but I'm sure there are some within the state.
I'm just wondering if there's somebody that would do it cheaper?
Perhaps, I, it's something we can look into, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The hospital in Fort Kent, they must utilize a service like this, I would think?
They, I'm not, I think they've got their own billing department, if I'm not mistaken, and they use, they do their own billing, so, yeah.
Anybody else? Keep going.
Okay. Supplies, we have, uh, in general, six hundred dollars for office supplies. We did bring that up, uh, from three hundred dollars, uh, to cover water in, in, in the building. We don't have any water, drinking water there, uh, so it's just the, the, the water cans that you get by the water cooler, so that's just covering our water for the year. General supplies, that's four hundred dollars, that's unchanged. This, this buys our laundry detergent for our, for our sheets and, and car, I don't know, car wash, that's another idea, but. Laundry detergent, uh, just anything that we might need around the station that, that we need to use for, for the station. Medical supplies, uh, twenty-five thousand, that is down three thousand from last year. Uh, in previous years, uh, that, that line item was very under budgeted, it was almost getting overdrafted. So, and, uh, last year was like my first year getting comfortable with, with, uh, the budget and, and trying to make sure this account was well, um, funded for, for medical supplies, cuz the, the supplies unfortunately are expensive, and there's nothing cheap about that. I do the best I can to find, uh, the best deals or, or cheaper supplies as I, as I can. Um, but, um, given that, that one year that I finally, I got to see a broad number as to what we were gonna use, we were, we'd expended, I believe it was, where am I? It was just that twenty-one thousand dollars, so I think with twenty-five thousand dollars, we'll be safe in the ballpark. Uh, considering that we're gonna have Grand Isle as well now, we're gonna have an extra twenty to thirty calls, so this should be fairly safe for us to.
And, and those are the supplies that get reimbursed when we get, when we bill the people anyways?
For the most part, yes, yeah.
If we're being reimbursed through the billing, why is there a charge on the budget?
We still have to account for it.
Yep. You have, all the expenses go in the budget, then you have your revenue side, so.
We have to have a line item and, and account to pull the money out of to. Pay the bills.
So, so those medical expenses basically are covered, covered at a hundred percent?
Yeah.
Give or take?
Give or take.
Okay.
Oxygen, two thousand dollars, that's down from, uh, actually three thousand a few years ago, was twenty-two thousand, or twenty-two hundred last year. Brought that down to two thousand. Protocols have changed over the years, I mean, when I started twenty years ago, we were giving everybody oxygen. Well, that's all, that's out the door. If patients are, are comfortable in their oxygen saturation, I don't wanna get into too much Chinese here for you guys here, but their oxygen saturation is in a certain parameter, even though they're having a heart attack, they don't need oxygen. That's not gonna help. So, we're using less oxygen now than we have been before, so. So, that's down to two thousand. Uh, bottom line, our line was twenty-eight thousand, it's down, uh, thousand nine hundred from, uh, excuse me, two thousand.
Two, two thousand nine, yeah.
Utilities, phone, uh, that is, uh, up five hundred from two thousand, uh, at twenty-five hundred dollars. Gary could probably explain more of that.
So, the, the town utilizes a voice-over-internet system. Our call, we are, uh, we don't have a phone line per se with, uh, traditional landline. We have, uh, internet phone, uh, through three CX, and so we have internet in all our facilities, in our, our phone system, we call it VoIP. Uh, when we changed to the VoIP system, um, the entire cost of the VoIP system was being handled through the town office, the, uh, town office building budget, if you will. Um, and so, this budget, what it does is it's putting that cost into each department, cuz they each have a phone line or two, and so we're reassigning those costs out of, out of the town office building budget to each department's budget, and that's what the increase is for.
Internet six hundred, that is unchanged. Uh, bottom line there is up five hundred, uh, at thirty-one hundred versus twenty-six hundred last year. Moving on, and minor equipment, uh, we have the, uh, two, I wrote it down, six thousand from eight thousand to two thousand dollars. This, this is a minor equipment account, this is what will buy things like, uh, if, if a longboard breaks, or a, uh, you know, cardiac monitor, or a stretcher or something like that breaks, or, and we need to replace it. This, eight thousand dollars with a lot of the, I mean, with two thousand dollars, I can replace most of the little things, that's not a big deal, but if I were to need a stretcher, eight thousand dollars doesn't even come close to it anyway. So, the way I, I saw this is I can bring it down, and if we need a, a, a big ticket item, we, I can approach the board and ask you guys to, to go into our reserve account to purchase, and let's say if we need a stretcher or cardiac monitor or something like that.
Eric, I do have a note here, I wanna interrupt you, but I just wanna make, I have a note from the previous year that, that in that line item, um, minor equipment, seventeen hundred ninety-five dollars goes to your copier lease?
Right.
So, you know, you might.
Oh, that eats it up?
You're gonna.
No, I don't have a lease, I, we bought that.
Okay, so that's.
Sorry, my bad. Yeah, that's purchased.
That's, so that no longer?
No, that was bought, that's bought and paid.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Uh, minor equipment repair, if we do have small equipment that can be repaired, if the, if the stretcher, the hydraulics isn't working good or something, and it's just a, a, a repair, that's where we can, uh, that account. Bottom line there, it's down to forty-two hundred from, uh, ten thousand to fifty. Vehicle equipment, you got the gas, is at ten thousand dollars, that's flat from last year, unchanged. We've been doing okay, as long as fuel prices stay okay, stable, I should, I should say, um, we're, we're, we're doing all right with that. Maintenance and repair, we were at ten thousand dollars as well, that's also remained flat from previous years. That's pretty well okay right there too. We haven't had, knock on wood, we haven't had any issues, uh, but, uh.
Where does propane come?
I'm not sure, that was just part of the line item that, that they put in there. We don't use propane. And that's a twenty thousand, flat from the previous year for bottom line. Our total, uh, bottom line is six seventy-nine, five oh seven, up from the six seventy-seven, five fifty. That is due prior for insurance, that will, pretty much everything else, that either stayed flat or it came down in the budget.
Okay. Any questions?
If you have no questions, I'd like to draw your attention to the revenue budget, which is the last page on, on your pack here.
Yep.
We can take a look at revenues for the ambulance department. So, you can see the history there, uh, of what was approved as budgets and was actually drawn in. Uh, the fourth cau-, uh, column before last, uh, is, uh, what we're proposing this year, uh, for, for revenue, uh, billing revenue. We're, we're proposing to be flat from last year. Uh, keep in mind that what we've done in the past is, um, we've not put in everything that we thought we were gonna get for billing revenue, so that we would allow some money to roll into their, uh, equipment reserve. Um, we have the contracted service with St. Agatha, St. Agatha, uh, for ninety-four hundred dollars. Contracted services for, uh, sorry, let me go back to billing revenue, did I say the number? It was just three seventy-five, um, which is the same as last year. Uh, we actually drew in last year four hundred and thirty-six twenty-seven, uh, and then, uh, on billing revenue, contracted services from St. Agatha, uh, ninety-four hundred dollars, contracted services from Frenchville, thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, contracted services from Grand Isle, which is a new revenue for us, of eight thousand sixty-seven dollars. And you'll notice that I have in there transfer in from ambulance surplus, and that's what I was talking about earlier, and you can see a three-year, three-year account activity or hish-, budget activity in that respect, uh, in the eighteen budget and in the nineteen budgets. Uh, a hundred fifty thousand was taken in from their reserve to, to supplant or offset their own budget. It wasn't done last year. Uh, and we're proposing to do that this, I mean, it'll be up to the board if we wanna do that or not. I needed to put a place mark in there, um, as past practice. So, um, any questions in respect to revenue?
So, we're looking at about a hundred twenty-five thousand hitting the taxpayers, if you take the revenue minus the expenses?
Yeah, what is the question?
Sorry, uh, I was just looking at revenue and expenses, brings in about a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars going to, for the townspeople to pay. So. Right?
The town's, has always subsidized, that's a discussion that I had earlier.
Yep.
All towns subsidize our ambulance departments, and so. All towns subsidize our ambulance departments, and so, um, that gap is, is closed over the years, uh, because of the addition of, the acquisition or, or getting more towns.
Now, you, you had also mentioned earlier that they, their reserve fund is adequate to fund the one fifty. Uh, would it be adequate enough to fund two hundred thousand, let's say, this year, just to help offset the town budget a little bit more and?
So I think, uh, let's talk about the fleet, if you will. Uh, if you can talk to us about the age of your fleet, how many ambulances we have?
We got the three ambulances, our newest one being the two thousand and eighteen, which we have, uh, we're still making payments on that. That was at least a home over five years. Um, I'm not, don't call it the payments, we're on there. Uh, we're in two thousand and fifteen, um, that one too, that one is, um, as I said, mentioned, five years old. Still runs great, you know, it's been, been good to us, and then we have our two thousand and ten. Uh, bringing it out, that, that was ten years old. Past practice has always been after ten years or so, ambulances structurally start getting a little rotted out and start having some, some, some problems with them. Um, and that's when we look to start to replace that, that unit. So, uh, it's been good to us, uh, it's still going right now. I would like to, uh, sometime in the, in the next year, perhaps, start looking at, uh, getting another one to replace that one. Uh, unfortunately for us, you know, uh, I remember, uh, previous board member, Mr. Moore, had asked, you know, diesel, so you can get two, three hundred thousand miles, uh, that's true, yes, but us, it's, it's the, the salt in, in the corrosion that, that hurts us as far as longevity for our ambulances. So, uh, so this one is starting to show that, uh, that, that wear and that rust. Uh, it's due for an inspection next month, I'm hoping, uh, see how that's gonna go, hopefully it'll pass. Get another winter out of it perhaps, and then next summer we can certainly discuss, uh, whether we can get an ambulance.
So, to get to your question, uh, Jason D., the ambulance, uh, the two thousand and eighteen Ford F- E- four fifty, uh, we pay, um, we have a debt service annual payment of forty-two thousand. I'm gonna round it up to three hundred dollars. Um, and I think we have it this year, next year. I think we're out until twenty twenty-one. I have to check, I don't have my debt service.
Right.
Schedule in front of me, but we're still out a couple more year payments on that. Um, the ambulance department, the, the payment for this has been coming from the reserves. So it's not in your debt service budget.
Yep.
Every year, the, the ambulance's reserve budget has been paying for the debt service on the ambulance.
So we could assume a new one next year, let's say, would be maybe fifty, like, obviously prices go up.
If we do at least own?
If, if we do at least own, but would that still leave enough if we take the two hundred thousand dollars? Would that still leave enough to pay for that and some in the, in that reserve? I mean, is that gonna hurt that reserve too much?
Ultimately, I think it would be okay. Yeah, it would leave your reserve at around five hundred thousand.
You know? Because fifty thousand dollars can go a long way to help relieve some of the, the tax burden. I mean, it's not saying we'd ask that every year, but, you know, just for this, uh, to help us move forward.
So the discussion right now would be that we try to increase the income side from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand?
Yeah, for this year.
Okay.
What would, uh, be left in the, uh, reserve for the ambulance after that would be done?
So we're at about seven hundred right now and change, uh, seven-ten. So we take, keep in mind that we're gonna take out the forty-two, what was the number I told you?
Yeah.
Uh, out of that. Um, and then another, you know, another, uh.
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two hundred. So that would take that down to less than five.
No, five hundred thousand, half a million.
Yeah.
And projected, projected for the next year, what would the increase again be for that roughly? A hundred thousand?
I, I, I don't know.
It's hard to say.
I think that, I just want you to be mindful of, you know, I don't know if you're gonna build up to the, to, to that amount again next year. And so whenever we take money out of, out of the reserve, if you will, if we can't repeat that transaction next year, that, that shows up like a mill rate increase.
Like you said, we could do it every few years, a while earlier this evening, you said, you know, every few years we take some to help.
Yes.
Once we have time to help.
Yeah.
Right. But if, but if, if the fund, if that reserve account is not adequately funded, like next year, and we say, uh, we just can't really go into it by the same amount of money, by the two hundred, or we can't go into it all, that's a revenue loss.
Yeah.
I know, I, I know it sounds weird to call it revenue, but it's.
I'm just thinking the town garage was wanting, or even considering raising taxes for that greater, where we have a half a million dollars sitting in the account. I have trouble with that.
So what would the reason be? The, the reserve account, why is that reserve account not being rolled over into the undesignated fund like the others?
Because the reserve account is, is exactly that, it's, it's a capital reserve account, it is set aside uh, to fund the capital outlays, and, and it doesn't roll into the surplus like unspent monies in, in a department budget. That's how, that's how municipal government works in Maine. It's not a Madawaska thing, uh, it's, it's a town thing. And so, um, for us, that, that's the hand that we have to play, and that, there's nothing that we can do to change that.
It's just from a, in my view, it's, it's, it's hard to see, uh, a department doing so well, and the other one struggling to stay afloat. This is our town.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? If one's struggling, we should help him.
You must be older than fifty years old.
I am. I struggle a lot. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Okay. Anything else? Lori?
Oh, I'm having a hard time. Um, no, I, I, listen, I'm, I'm being very careful with the ambulance department. Um, I found out a couple last week, I saw my daughter-in-law struck at the police department two days in a row, and I couldn't figure out what was going on, so I called her and I asked her. And she's been spending time with Eric, tentatively thinking about taking a class and going to work for them. So I don't really want to involve myself in the ambulance department budgeting, just because, I mean, I don't know. I feel like a family member might go work there, and I should just mind my business with, with this.
I can appreciate that.
So, I'm having a, having a hard time, though, my, the inside of my mouth is bleeding.
So that, is there anything, go ahead.
I would just encourage the board to look at some of the other options out there, the other municipalities are doing. I'll give you the example. See, Carol will run the fire EMS, they're a little bit joint in their budget system. And because you have a fire department that doesn't really generate revenue, it's hard for a fire department to maintain itself without requesting direct taxpayer dollars, right? So when you have shared revenues from similar departments such as the fire EMS, it also will give some of those situations, and more falls along, like Ken's talking about, where departments are sharing that. And it makes that process a little easier. I would just encourage the board to look out, even beyond a local area, and look at what other municipalities are doing with their budgets when it comes to fire and EMS, or how a fire department is struggling. And I think there's a possibility that the ambulance service, working collaboratively on the budget system with the fire department, could benefit both of those health industries and taxpayers. That's my suggestion.
Do you have any suggestions as to where and how we would start that process to inquire about this?
I would reach out to the chiefs of those departments and find out what they do in, in their budget cycles and how that works for them.
Okay.
And I'm not saying that's the answer here, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying involve, pump the ambulance service with all their money given to the fire department. But I think, you know, given the circumstances where we're at, I think we can maybe be in a better place by combining some of our departments and helping reduce those expenses directly sent into the taxpayer.
Point well taken. Anybody else?
Hey, listen, I just, um, I'm not gonna ask a question, except didn't you guys, wasn't there this, this, hasn't there been this discussion, like Dan said, uh, where would you start? Haven't you guys had some kind of discussion about that, just really preliminary, just throwing it up in the air? Like, this is not a new concept for, to you guys there.
Yeah, so.
Right?
We, we, prior to me getting here, uh, three years ago, um, it was a s- sort of a spearhead by, uh, some of our neighboring communities to see whether or not there was a regional, regional solution here for fire EMS, particularly fire. And so we did have, uh, some meetings with other fire departments. Uh, we met, actually in Fort Kent, and, uh, to discuss whether or not, and, and it was more, that's, I don't know if it was necessarily driven from a cost standpoint, it was more being driven by the fact that a resources standpoint in manpower and cost, uh, that it's, it's becoming much more complicated to run volunteer fire departments. Uh, the, the expectations, Jason can elaborate on that, but, a- and I was a fireman for, for nine years, so the expectations of firemen and the trainings that they have to, to do to be a volunteer, with very little stipend, are high. Uh, just like they would be a full-time fireman, they need to get all their certifications and, you know, so the recruitment was becoming difficult, and it, it looked like, you know, we were heavily dependent, or, or fire departments were heavily dependent on, uh, people that had been there for a long time, and, and recruitment efforts were struggling in some communities and not so much others. And so we wanted to have like a regional discussion to see whether or not there were some opportunities for a regional fire EMS kind of thing. Uh, and, and if my memory serves me right, this was also driven by the fact that, well, what drove, what drove, uh, Madawaska to expand their ambulance department was the fact that ASI, uh, all of a sudden came in and they said they, they had never been billing towns before, uh, for their op- for, for the difference. They could no longer continue to provide ambulance services without picking up the shortfall from each community. And so ASI picks up their, they, the way that they, uh, calculate each community's, um, requests, if you will, is based on their valuation. Uh, and there's a formula based on their valuation, the state valuation of, of each community. So that whole regional discussion, I know this is long-winded, but it was born out of, all of a sudden, ASI now wants to build all these towns, and the towns are like, whoa, like, we didn't see this coming, and so can we have a regional discussion about a regional fire EMS? And that was three years ago.
Yeah, I just thought I remembered hearing a conversation here in town that.
It, it didn't go far.
That you were.
ASI means what again?
Ambulance Service Inc., based out of Fort Kent.
Okay, anything else? We're good?
Yep.
Thank you, Eric.
Doug, would you entertain a motion to go beyond the two hours?
We're there already.
With the bathroom break?
Eric, we're not kicking you out, if you want to stick around.
Yes, I would entertain a motion.
We're not kicking you out, so if you want to stick around.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we, um, extend beyond the two hours, but, um, take a five-minute break.
Second that motion?
Three-minute break.
All in favor? Very good, recess for five. God, we're only hitting, what, Article four of eight? We've already bumped to hours. We've got another two hours.
I knew that, but those are, I said, there's no way you can tackle all that in one night. It's a lot of.
General assistance, insurance should be all right, sure, insurance should go fairly quick. Inter-gu- uh, governmental budget. Debt service, yeah, there's a few of them on the backside there, that shouldn't be too all.
Hey, there's more too, there's a box somewhere. Somewhere, there's, there's a box of wire. Where the heck did we put my box more?
I'm just wondering, uh, I mean, sometimes when we're discussing some of these budgets, you know, there's, there's debt service on. On these budgets that we don't have a side note somewhere that just tells us, you know, that we still have debt service on wherever. Even though it's not part of the budget, it's good for.
Yeah.
Two down, two more to go. Two hours down, two to go.
Call you guys at four, one more.
I'll be up at four, or four-thirty. Four-thirty, I'll watch the sun come up.
Come up to five fifteen?
Yeah, well, it's a lake for, uh, for all of your new guys, you're in the hills, Doug. You're not on the hill, you're on the hill. You dating?
It, it usually is cooler in here, you out, take another one. Thank you.
Yep, yep, I'm good, yeah. To this particular camp, this particular company? What do you mean, fifty hundred?
Fifty modesty hunters.
Are coming in that first week?
First week, thirty-sixth, second week.
You kind of commenting, maybe?
I'll be.
No, no, but I mean, even that? It's a big territory. You must be covering the big territory and ba- be dating that big.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna vote there, I know you guys wanna get through this, but I feel like, I feel like. No, and I could vote with you, but I just don't, I mean, I, they need a chance to have their numbers in front of them and be comfortable. No, no, I can't.
I was gonna say, they must be charging a pretty big bill. I'd have to go back through those expenses, but that doesn't seem like a lot of money to, at the, at the end of it. Ah, God, that's always.
I almost went walking cool in the kitchen.
Absolutely. You have to separate them somehow. Are we, um, here we go? Back in session.
Mr. Chair, if I might, uh, Carol wanted me to mention something, and I, I, it was a good point, uh, so we all understand. Reserve accounts, um, capital reserve accounts or any reserve accounts are, uh, proposed by the board. They are approved at town meeting for a specific purpose. So if ever, you know, we wanted to shift money from one reserve account for something other than what it was intended for, we gotta go back to the, we gotta go back to the voters for that. And Dan, I, I was, I want to get back to you. And Dan, I, I was, I want to get back to you, um, on revenue sharing and I, I wanted to, to, to basically clarify something and I, we just kept talking and I forgot. Uh, we are statutorily required to plug in that revenue sharing number that's, that's given to us. We need to take revenue sharing, needs to be used to reduce taxes, so, uh, I just wanted you to know that. If they give us a number of what they're telling us they're gonna pay us, then we have to use that, we have to use that number to reduce taxes. It's not something that we have a choice.
Okay. Alright, let's move on to Article, Article what, Article four. Consider the Department six hundred recreational department budget.
So.
Did you want to say something Gary first, or do you want me to let him go?
I mean, we, we, I can go through the salaries and the benefits again, uh, if that's okay. Right now, we're showing that, uh, a slight increase in, in overall wages there at two thirty-six, oh two six, uh, compared to last year. And, you know, the reason why there's an increase, it's not that we're increasing the budget, um, in the rec department this year. It's because last year we hired people there. Um, we have an employment agreement with them when they started to work for us at a certain rate of pay that, at six months, based on a, a good eval, that we would, uh, bump them up, uh, to their rate of pay. So, that's the reason why that the increase is there. It's not that nobody's getting any colas or, or any raises, it's just that there were steps in, in employment agreements that need to be honored, uh, for that. Moving on down, um, made state retirement benefits trend with that. Um, so, uh, let me back up, so the overall budget for salaries and wages at the rec department is two thirty-six, oh two six. An increase from last year's two-two-eight, nine-two-two. Trending from there is made state retirement, the town's contribution is fifteen thousand, six sixty-three. Health insurance at eighty-five, five sixty-three, that reflects the ten percent increase in the rate for six months. Employer Social Security's fourteen thousand, six thirty-four, Medicare, three thousand, four twenty-two. For a grand total in the employee benefits of one nineteen, two eighty-two, as compared to last year's one eleven, two ninety-five. And with that, I'm gonna hand off to Sam and Diane to talk about their operations. While they're doing that, I'm going to pass out, uh, the revenue and expense of the programs. There are, uh, some programs that are self-funded, if you will. People pay for their kids to come in for a baseball activity or whatnot. That's funded and it's expensed out and it's, it doesn't, yes, do you have that already?
I had one.
Okay, I did pass it out.
Yep.
It's, I think it's that one up there, Dan, just, no, yeah, that one. Go ahead, Sam.
Yep. So, starting with operating expenses, uh, we've got clothing and safety equipment at three seventy-five, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, dues, subscriptions and memberships, uh, three hundred, which is also the same. Uh, printing and advertising at five hundred, which is an increase of two hundred from the previous year. Uh, the thought process behind that would, uh, was to try to do some, uh, paid advertising for some of the larger programs that we do offer to try to, um, get more, um, interest from the community as well as surrounding communities to see if we can, um, bump up some of the programs. Cause we, uh, at least in the short time that I've been here, we've, I know some of the sports programs have been, um, just haven't been a lot of kids that have joined and, uh, just to see if we can, uh, get some more interest.
Are you referring to the situation today with COVID-nineteen, or are you talking about these programs as a whole from years past?
Just as a whole, as a whole, yeah, not, not COVID-nineteen related.
Okay.
Uh, moving on, uh, travel and training, uh, is at fourteen hundred, that's the same, uh, from the previous year. Uh, totaling operation, uh, operating expenses at, uh, two thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Moving on to supplies, uh, office supplies at thirteen hundred dollars, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, general supplies is at a thousand dollars, which is an increase of five hundred dollars from the previous year. We, uh, would like to use that money for, um, updating our first aid, uh, kits for the summer and the winter, uh, activities. The summer program and the winter program, as well as the maintenance guys should have a first aid kit in their vehicles when they're away from the rec. And, uh, the first aid kits at the rec right now are not, um, they're lacking some, um, supplies as well as outdated supplies that are in there right now. So, that would just be to cover that, uh, that purchase. Uh, next janitorial supplies is at, uh, two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, that's the same as the previous year. Uh, totaling supplies is four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, moving on to utilities, we've got electricity at twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, telephone is at two thousand, six hundred dollars, which is also the same as the previous year. Uh, trash at four hundred dollars, which is the same. Uh, septic at twelve hundred dollars, which is the same. Uh, sewer at five hundred dollars, the same as well. Uh, heating fuel is at five thousand dollars, which is a decrease of sixteen hundred from the previous year due to the, um, good rate that we got with the, the townwide, um, rate. Uh, water fees, uh, thirteen hundred dollars, which is the same. Internet is at thirty-six hundred dollars and that is also the same. Uh, totaling utilities is, uh, thirty-six thousand, fifty dollars. Uh, moving on to minor equipment, uh, rental, which is the, uh, copier that we lease at the rec, uh, rec department, uh, is at twelve hundred dollars for the year, it's the same as the previous year. Moving on, uh, vehicle and equipment, gas, diesel and propane is at seven thousand dollars, which is the same as the previous year. Uh, repair and maintenance of vehicles is at four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, that's also the same as the previous year. Uh, in total for vehicle and equipment is eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Can I stop you there for a sec? So I'm seeing here that you've already, uh, overspent that figure, that, that figure of, uh, repair and maintenance? Looks like, uh, up to six thirty twenty, you spent five thousand, three twenty-three?
Yes, that is, um, there had been a lot of repairs to the tractor as well as the truck and a few other of our equipment. Um, so that, those are just repairs that were needed to be made and, uh, we had overspent in that line item.
Okay.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, moving on to general maintenance, fire alarm and sprinkler, there's, uh, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Sam, can I, can I break in here with that? Laurie kind of alluded to that earlier, I think it'd be a good point to mention here. Our sprinkler system at the multipurpose is a dry system, meaning it's, it's, it's pressurized with air. And in the event that, you know, the sensors pick up the fire's heat and they release, uh, that's what opens, you know, the, the loss of pressure is what activates the, uh, the water to come in to the sprinkler system. Um, it's a dry system because it's a cold building, that's why it needs to be dry. That system there is, we've been patching, uh, pinholes constantly, putting clamps and rubber bands and stuff like that to try to prevent the pinholes at the bottom of the pipes are, are corroding out, if you will, and so we can't, we're constantly, um, having to fix that. Uh, we, I can't remember the, the amount of money, we know that it's gonna cost a lot of money to update, upgrade that fire suppression system in that building. So, Gerald, Gerald were here tonight, he would remind us of that. He'll probably do that when he gets, comes here to talk about his budgets, but, uh, we do have it, that sprinkler system that's, we've been patching along. And, and at some point in time, we're gonna have to discuss, what do we do with that?
Does it, does it go, uh, you guys must be, uh, you guys must be subject to, uh, to inspections? And. What's that?
We get efficiency fails every, every six months.
So the system is not passing?
It, it, it doesn't meet inspection, it is functional though, but, you know, it will do its job, but it's just that it's, it, it's time.
So if we have some major, uh, event over there and they wanna see our insurance, would that, would that be exposed, would we see that somewhere that, that the fire suppression is?
I don't know. I know the, the fire marshal checks it out before any major events, and I believe it was the Acadian Festival last year where one of the events almost got canceled because the sprinkler system wasn't working to efficiency and they weren't allowing a certain amount of people in the building, so. It's definitely something that can shut down the building pretty quick.
We were having issues, it was a faulty, uh, it was a faulty valve there.
The gate valve.
The gate valve. That, that's been fixed, but whenever we fix that, we can't, we have to have main fire suppression syst-, I think they're called? Is it main fire? Protection, they're the ones that have to come do the work and they have to put their stamp on that, um, and so.
So they're putting their stamp and just saying deficiencies, there are some deficiencies?
When they come through the repairs, you know, that they're qualified repair technician for those kinds of systems, so, yeah, they're, they're backing their repairs, but, you know, the, the bands and.
I guess really what I'm getting at is could, could we have some major event someday that, that would be denied because of where our water system, sprinkler system is not working correctly?
No, cause it is working to enough capacity, but it's just that it's not meeting a hundred percent of the, the need that it should be meeting.
And we can ask Jim Soucy to speak to that when it comes to talk about his budgets in our next meeting. I will say that, you know, we've, you know, we've talked with, uh, we have our activities in there, but we also have like the Top of Main Trade Show.
Right.
You know, and so I think that our discussions have been that we may have to put a fire watch in there. If, if that system is not doing what it's supposed to do, meaning, fire watch would be somebody would be in the building all, at night to make sure that, you know, they can call you, you know, it, it is an alarmed building, don't get me wrong, it'll call out automatically, but.
No.
No, it doesn't?
It doesn't?
Not anymore?
It hasn't called out for about three years now.
No, since we got on, uh, ASI, on board.
Well, once, once we left Vescom and went to the sheriff's office, the, the system doesn't dial out because the sheriff's office won't do auto dialers.
Oh, yes, I mean, we told them that.
But, to further.
But we, we do have a redundancy though, that instead of that, it will call out.
No.
Um, no, 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 like staff redundancy, meaning it'll call, the dialers will call the staff, somebody with, um, the fire department and directly, not, just not through the nine-one-one system, yeah.
But, further Doug, what could happen is because the pipes leak so often, tomorrow there could be a pinhole that appears and if the pressure reduces fast enough in the system, it'll deactivate the system. Which would cause us to say there's an event the day after, you can't have the event because that pinhole needs to be fixed, so, yeah, it's.
It has happened pretty, uh, fairly recently too, like, uh, just during our programs, the six, six-week program, so it just ended. Um, I was leaving, locking up the building and I heard the, the pinhole air coming out of the system, so the next day the, the maintenance guys fixed it, but it, it, you know, okay. So it does happen fairly recent, fairly frequently.
Good question, can we, our maintenance employees work on that system?
I think we can, we can plug those little pinholes, but I don't, we can't work in the, the mechanical side of that sprinkler system.
Same again, but if it's piping, it's leaking, pipe's cheap, and if we can do the repairs.
Oh, I, I, I don't know that we can, I, I, cause it's a public building, I'm not sure that we can.
So every time we have a pinhole, we call a bank or they come?
No, no.
No, we fix the pinholes, then we call a bank or when it needs to be replaced, where there's.
So there, there's a lot of Band-Aids, if you will, along.
So we are allowed to Band-Aid?
Yes, which has been happening.
Okay.
I, I think, um, can I just add, I think just for those that, I, we've had prior discussion about this. I think the figure was close to a hundred thousand dollars to replace the whole system, I could be wrong, but that's, that's what I remember. And the reason the prior, um, boards had chosen to wait on it and not really do anything is because of the whole talk about consolidation of schools. And then, what's gonna happen with this building, if we do that, then potentially the rec could just move here and then we could change that to a storage facility or like, so that was why I, from my understanding, that that's been let go and, and they were waiting. So it's up to us if we wanna continue waiting or, or, you know, address it.
So this has been like tabled for a few years then?
I, I believe, am I, am I calling this conversation currently?
I'm glad as you pointed out, previous boards had basically said, well, you know, the discussions with the Valley Unified were, were ongoing and, uh, the disposition of the school was, was in question as to whether or not that something would fall into town hands or fall, would be sold or whatnot, that's something, that's a bigger discussion, but the possibility of, of these facilities becoming town buildings, if you will, not the school, led them to say, well, before we make any big investments at the multi, let's just wait and see what happens and see what the townspeople wanna do with these facilities.
Yep.
Before we spend that kinda money up there, revamping that, that fire suppression system.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else, yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to move on to the very first, uh, motion, this, uh, telephone, twenty-six hundred dollars and internet, thirty-six hundred dollars. It's up to sixty-two hundred dollars. You'll be hard-pressed to convince me, although you don't have to convince me, but I, I don't, I don't think sixty-two hundred dollars is well-spent for phone and internet in a recreation department, I think we can do with, out totally or with far less.
The telephone, is that, they say?
So the telephone is, is the VoIP system, um, and the internet is a couple of things, it's internet for the building and it's also provides for the, for the, uh, the internet for the Top of Main Trade Show, the Wi-Fi, the hotspot, so there's a dedicated, uh, line of internet for that and, and public internet there, and then there's the internet that supports our, our systems, those are separate.
If it's just for certain events, HughesNet will, uh, give you access to coverage or whatever they call it, sell data for, for a segment of, uh, period of time at a fraction of this cost, tell us.
Chase, you know, we look at this internet service right now, I mean, your thoughts there? I mean, it, to me, it, it looks high, telephone, I, I don't know if I can question or argue that too much, but, but the internet here seems to be really out of.
I, I think a little bit, I think one of the things that can be done is, um, reducing to one internet connection line and then purchasing a firewall that could separate and segment the two networks and the cost of that firewall would be less than the cost of the internet for the year, but would also reduce the price the year after.
Can somebody explain to me why we need the internet?
There's a lot that goes on with the internet, for the rec, some of the programs, I believe, use them.
We used to have only one internet, now we have two.
And that's where.
And, so what, what, two's question there, I mean, do we have, do we have? For what?
For the second one.
Okay.
I mean, we can take a look at.
Yep, we can, alright.
Go ahead, Laurie's got a question.
Yep.
And the trade show activities and things that happen there, um, all those extras, like you guys provide, um, you know, your maintenance people and all of this stuff and, and cleaning and all, and there's no charge for you to do any of that, right? You know, rental, rent fee or, or anything like that. What other events are held there that you, like what, what other kind of events do you not get a fee to? You know, I understand it's all town events, but what other events are we talking about?
Acadian Festival would be another big one.
Music in the park, that's a rainy, that's a rain.
What?
Rain, uh, music in the park, when they have, uh, rain, when they get rained out and they see they're gonna, they go there.
Inside?
Yeah.
They had like, uh, last year they had, what's the, not a ball of the day, but what was it, uh, Soul?
Uh, the Rhythm and Roots.
Rhythm and Roots, yeah.
I definitely think it's something we could look into, like, for example, the other, that gentleman that came into one of our meetings who wanted to use a space. I think we should come up with a better rental fee for some of our properties, our fields, um, and the building itself.
Yep.
We can certainly look into the internet issue.
Anybody else? Okay, point taken, go ahead, Sam.
Yep, uh, so we're moving on to building repair and maintenance, uh, parks and restrooms is at nine thousand dollars.
Uh, so we're moving on to building repair and maintenance, uh, parks and restrooms is at nine thousand dollars, uh, is the same from the previous year. Uh, multipurpose building repair is at four thousand dollars, it's the same as the previous year and. We'll note that we did overspend in that line item, it was due to a um, no oil tank that had gone bad, so we needed to replace it. It was during the the cold winter months, so we really didn't have a choice. And at that point, we were um, close to being over, but uh, instead of separating the accounts that we had met with Dana at the time to. Instead of going over in that line item, we could have separated it into other accounts, but we just decided to put it into this one. Just so that that purchase would have stayed together, so that's the the reason for the going over in that line item. Any comments on that? Okay, uh, so totaling building repair and maintenance, uh, comes out to thirteen thousand dollars, uh, which is the same as the previous year.
Sam, can you, can you elaborate on on the facilities that you maintain, those part of those parks and restrooms, where where those are?
Parks and restrooms, yeah, so the multipurpose building, uh, the Boy Scout Hut, um, the Bridgepoint Beach. As well, the boat landing in back of the town garage or central building, um. And the boat landing in next to the um. The uh, Historical Society as well, mow that. Um, the Vicentino Park, the Zian Park, and now the uh, New Park and Parks as well, that'll be under our purview. All the athletic fields as well, we take care of those. The multipurpose field as well. So that's.
So you have like twenty of them?
What's that, I'm sorry?
You have twenty of them?
That's all the parks and, that's all that falls under the parks and restrooms.
But I'm saying that those units, those uh, those portable units, you have roughly twenty that you're maintaining or paying for, roughly?
Correct, yeah, uh, I don't know if it's twenty, but.
Were you talking about porta potties?
Yeah.
And an off-porta body?
Is that what you're, I thought that's that's what you were?
No, that's just parks, parks and restrooms, parks, I mean, parks and then restrooms.
Facilities maintenance, so.
There's restrooms at the Vicentino Park, uh, at the Bridgepoint Beach, there's a porta potty at the.
So that, but that's part of this bill, right?
Right, exactly.
Would that include the RV park down by the town garage on the river?
Yes, it would, yep.
Assuming that we own a piece of property. That falls under the category of parks. If the piece of property would never be used in a three-hundred-and-sixty-five day period, would we continue to service it?
Uh, that's definitely something we could look at and then.
What do you mean?
Quantify the.
Well, uh. Again, it's a little bit personal, but the RV park uh, down by the town garage is in direct conflict with a private business. Having a, an RV park rental, now it is policy in town here. That the town is not to be engaged in any form of business that is in competition with the local business. Which is exactly what we're doing with the park down by the town garage. Now, I'd like to know how often has that park used and. I don't need them tonight, but within a reasonable amount of time, I would like figures on how many times that has been used.
Is 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 that uh, is is that even possible? I mean, is is somebody?
The the PD, because people, campers can come in at off-hours, the only department that we have that is open. To to handle uh. Somebody coming in after four PM would be the police department, so the police department is the one that handles reservations over there, they have those numbers.
Okay.
I thought, Dan, I wasn't sure if your question is whether or not we maintain the buildings in the winter, like those facilities are closed, they're winterized and closed.
Significant, significant amount of grass to be mowed there. And to my knowledge, there has only been one camper there this summer, and secondly, uh, I would appreciate an answer. Why is the town allowed to compete with a private business owner that's in the exact same business?
Well, just for everybody's information, that project there is a departmental conservation project, they paid for the that boat landing. It was done under grants at the same time, it was a regional grant, my God, this was. It was a selectman in Frenchville back then, but the boat landing in Frenchville?
Boat landing was, but not the, not the RV park sites. That was Christina's baby.
Was it not part of the same project though?
No.
Maybe for two thousand fourteen, about two thousand thirteen, I think.
Well, the ba, the bathroom facilities.
Fourteen, the World of Canadian Congress, uh, where she changed the town ordinance that they could have a holding tank for the. Sewerage. Which again was against town policy.
I just, I just wanted you to know that, I wanted everybody to know that. With those facilities, like Frenchville has an agreement with IFNW, that's an IFNW boat launch. We have one with Department of Conservation, that's a DOC boat launch, and Grand Isle, I want to say, I believe is a DOC boat launch as well. And so each of those communities have a, have an agreement. To maintain, like, for instance, we take care of the small cutting of the lawns and stuff like that, but if there's damage to the planks. The ramp itself, the big stuff, uh, if they were to get flooded uh and damage the facility. Those, under the agreement, those costs are are paid for by by the.
I understand that, but the boat launch and the RV parking area are two totally different products.
And if we looked in the sewer, we could tell how many people been there.
Okay, anything else there? Let's keep going.
All right, uh, moving on to program expenses, uh, ten supplies, a thousand dollars is the same from the previous year. Special programs, uh, three thousand dollars is also the same. American flags, seven hundred and fifty dollars is also the same from the previous year, and the Christmas decorations is at eight hundred, uh, the same as the previous year. Uh, totaling program expenses is five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, totaling the budget is uh, four hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and eight dollars. It's up from uh, four hundred and seventeen thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars.
What's uh, what's special programs there, what's that, what's that referred to?
Uh, that is a, uh, well, so last year we used that to do our trunk retreat, uh, for the, for Halloween. Just to get supplies, um, any special program, I guess, that we want to do throughout the year, uh, whether it be. Kevin and I had talked about improving the uh soc, middle school soccer field, um, hill and turning that from rock into uh grass to make it more. Less weeds and make it easier for the guys to mow, so that would be a special program, a special, yeah, special program, I guess that could, that money could come out of there. So that's, that money's there for that.
So it's not necessarily identified yet, it's just?
That's my understanding of it.
Usually used around holidays, like a Christmas special, Thanksgiving special, if you want to bring like a Richard in town to. Do signs across for the kids or something that's, that would be used as a special program. Mad Science, you brought Mad Science in, showed the kids all kinds of experiments to do, that would come out of the special events where the kids gather, but they don't pay their fee. Comes as a special event.
Okay.
A question.
Yep.
Does the school department pay anything for the maintenance of those grounds, or is it strictly the rec?
Uh, they, they take care of their uh soccer fields, um, and but there is, so one soccer field, um. We do, uh, take care of the school grounds and uh, the mowing and the trimming as well, and so.
Why doesn't it come out of their budget?
Um, that's, I've, I've been worried about that and it's a, a complicated issue, maybe Gary can shed some light on it.
Not much.
I I just, I got a.
Seriously?
I I got a.
Charges the rec, it's a complicated answer, I guess, so I, I didn't, my my questions didn't get resolved, but.
Uh, that's something that I've wondered as well, because it doesn't seem like it's fair.
No.
To us, to the town, um, that we provide these services and then that they don't pay their fair share, so. It's brought up, it's been brought up, but um, I guess it's, hasn't, hasn't gotten resolved, so that's, that's the answer I got.
So Sam, within the next fourteen days, you think you could get the figure for me from the Madawaska PD, cause they're the ones that have the records on that? How many times that that park has been used in the last three years, usually?
Sure, yes, I can get that for you.
In addition to this in your budget, the department has self-funded programs.
Yep.
Will, that's that page that was provided to you, uh, and in here, you can see the program activity, uh, just overall cost. Uh, revenues and expenses and what the net is, uh, for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, nineteen twenty, and twenty twenty-one, which is what we're projecting.
So, uh, some other departments have some reserve accounts, I guess you can kind of view these as the rec department's reserve accounts in this, in the sense that they are. Figures that those revenues and expenses kind of just off, like, we spend money to, like, for example, youth activities. We, we spend money to on on activities for the kids, but we take in money from the programs that we run, the registration fees that we. That we take in from soccer and baseball and stuff like that, and we use that money to uh, buy equipment, uh, update the equipment, soccer balls and. Baseball helmets and stuff like that, so it's not, it's a non-taxpayer funded account, all of these are, um, but they. They carry over from year to year.
The bathrooms are built in Vicentino Park for. So the $330 we pay for that or selling slush cookies and chocolate bars and.
Which is not, I mean, that's.
Then that don't reach the schools and build another one.
It's not uh, what the accounts are there for, but that's what the money was spent for.
Are your hockey players no good? They lost three hundred bucks.
Uh, this is, this is the, the uh, projected revenue for this year, Dan. Uh, it's uh, just because there's a lot of equipment that's lacking, so I I projected that we need to revamp that area.
Go ahead, Laurie.
Okay, so, um. Self-funded, like for me, like I'm sorry there, but like Dan likes to call me the bean counter. Um, where are the summer programs covered? The expenses under this, is that what your youth activity is?
Yes, it is.
So. The fifty-two thousand three hundred and twenty dollars of temporary seasonal workers, is that all lawn maintenance, is that summer programs?
Yeah, seasonal uh workers for the summer programs are our camp counselors, uh, through the six-week programs, they.
So that should be on this side, on this page.
Not necessarily, cause it's all your lawn for the skating rink, whatever we bring in for skating fees goes to the slush fund, it doesn't belong to us.
Well, the slut, like, okay, so are there any wages reflected in this spreadsheet? Of what these programs actually cost to run? I'm not trying to, I'm just, I need to understand, because for me. This is then not self-funded because we have staff we're paying, we have all these, so. This ninety-three hundred dollars that you're projecting should be going to offset this staff. If we broke out and we put the staff here, your programs are running under. And so do we need to look at charging a little more? I mean, I have no idea, I don't, I don't want to start taking money out of families' pockets, but. Your, it, it, I've heard this said so many times in the last few weeks, well, but the rec programs are self-funded, self, they're not, that we have. Wages, expenses, things that go into these programs, so, um, I'm not trying to pick, I just, should we be charging more?
So do we have a, uh, do we, do we have a figure here?
Be like.
So besides wages, that's the only thing missing from this equation.
And do we have that figure?
Well, right here?
They, it's in.
Fifty-two is is inaccurate figure, so basically you're saying?
We only spent forty of forty thousand of that.
Well, you're asking for fifty-two, so I want to know, is that whole fifty-two for this?
And the reason why he's, I mean, I want to say that.
And I'm not trying to pick on him there.
No, 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 but I, but he only spent forty, but I need you to know that, the reason why they didn't spend is because we didn't bring in as much part-time staff. Because of the COVID.
COVID, right, right, but I I, um. Listen, I I look at, I. I look at the fire department and I look at the the public works who's struggling to keep the roads open and if there's no roads, nobody goes anywhere, anywhere, right? And the ambulance, and I, I have a very hard time with the amount of wages and everything that's sitting here, the amount of money we spend on the rec. If we're not charging enough, now if you guys say we're charging enough, if people come back and say, oh, these programs, you know, are costing the families a lot, there's too many families can't afford them. Fine, you know, I'll, I'll shut up, but, um, there's a difference between needs and wants. And when everybody's like banging at you to say cut, 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 obviously, it's the wants that get looked at the most. So I would just like to know what kind of fees at some point we are actually charging and and. Could we make more money somehow with this, you know, charge people for the trade show and charge, and and I guess we're robbing Peter PayPal, but.
So to answer your question there, to look at other communities statewide, basically, our our camps are. Very, very cheap compared to other communities, for our summer camp, just, just for example, um, I know Diane's daughter in Gray New Gloucester. Uh, for the summer camp down there pays sixteen or seventeen hundred dollars per kid, when ours is a hundred dollars. And and that's not including uh lunch, breakfast and lunch, and we provide a full breakfast and lunch for the kids. So with that being said, yes, you know, I, I don't know where that right price point is, you know, to, like you said, not to. Hurt the families and, you know, too much, but I I do think that the prices could be raised to an amount where. Where it offsets at least the, you know, that salary or so that we're not running under for.
But don't get me wrong, there are people that still think we're, not a lot, but there are some that still say we're overpriced, so.
There's still what?
Overpriced with 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 reference to what?
Taxpayer money?
No, no, I mean, for their, for their, uh, yeah, yeah.
Tax, we always think we're paying a little bit much.
But see, and I feel the kids go there for free, basically, so.
But it, but it's a one-person rec department with no building and no, so you, we almost can't compare there and and.
We could use work ethic to compare.
Yeah, we could.
If you separated out the parks, you know, and and I I did think of that, Ken, cause the. A lot of your wages too is in the park maintenance, which is what Gary was getting at, um.
We used to have a parks budget and a recreation budget, and that got combined a few years ago before we.
How many employees do you have total?
Four full-time employees.
Four full-time?
Yes.
I'll be the first to admit, um, I'm sixty-five years old, I'm old schooled, uh, when we were growing up, uh, there was minimal rec. But for certain individuals, we had to come home right after school, cause we had chores to do, so, you know, try to understand, I'm coming from that end, but I, but. I understand that today, the entire world is more recreation-minded than it ever has been. Personally, I think it's gone a little bit overboard. I would hate to see the day that as a selectman, that I have to sign my name on a document saying that we're gonna terminate an individual's unemployment. But I hope you can understand that when it comes to, uh, are we gonna purchase a badly needed fire truck? Or an ambulance or whatever the case might be? A real need versus something that we could do without if we had to. Does that make any sense? Well, when making the budget for the rec, please keep that in mind.
I wasn't going with with that. I'm, which I respect, I just, I I, I feel like we need to, I don't want to charge seventeen hundred dollars either, but, I mean, does it make sense? That taxpayers are paying this much money and that we only have to, we only charge a hundred dollars, like, I I don't know, I mean, if I'm out of line, that's fine.
Figure there, from what I can see, you're talking forty plus forty-two hundred in red there. Right, if you're considering uh, the estimated figure that they're giving us.
Yeah.
But you're putting all those wages in summer, which is, which isn't, uh, half those wages go in the winter time also, where we don't get those funds, it goes into the general account. Whatever we collect for skating fees, if we need to have staff on, we don't get those funds, those go in the general account. So how do you think we're gonna pay our staff if we don't get those funds?
So what you're showing here for income? Right.
We don't see the.
That that's just renting a pair of skates for a dollar, but the the fees that come in to skate.
Well, and and there's my point too, right? You're, you have to pay people to man this and to do the work and we're charging a dollar to rent a pair of skates. You know, like, I'm not looking at cutting a person out, I'm saying.
I think.
What?
You do all these things for the adults, hardly, 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 hardly.
Arlene, careful now, there's no public, there's no public, uh, there's no public comments in this, in this meeting. Arlene, I understand, but there's no public comments here.
I I think. Last year. I, I think last year.
Arlene, really, this is between these departments and the board and the financial, financial law.
So this is, so listen, we're, so listen, the rec department has always been a concern of mine because it's a big budget, right? When you look at big numbers, you have big, big costs, right? So, and I'm aware, Laurie, and I'm all about providing everything we can for, for the kids in our communities. Now, when, when I hear self-sufficient, I look at the total cost. The total cost would include labor. It would include the cost of maintaining restrooms and everything in my, that's, you know, but I, I run the ice cream factory, but you just think about the cost of buying ice cream. You know, I had cups to buy and straws to put out there, napkins to put out there. That's whole kit and caboodle. And so when you look at these things and when I, that's why we had asked back with the earlier budget process, we wanted to see what we decided because we need to know what revenues are offsetting the expenses. And this is clearly a, a large separation, right? I don't see where, and, and I'm not attacking at all the rec. I'm just suggesting that we probably do need to look at the way we're structuring our fees. And if this is going to be feasible, we've got to make it feasible and worthy for the taxpayers. And right now, based off what I've seen, the significant cost that taxpayers put on some of these programs, thirty-five thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars a month. So when you look at, for example, hockey, it's two years in a row we've taken a negative hit on hockey program. And I don't know what the cost is to join a hockey program. Maybe those individuals that want to play hockey would have to shell some more of the money. I don't know, but. Probably even a time where money wasn't so utterly important, this may not have any problem, but I think right now we, we really, I would challenge the entire group that, you know, whether it's you set your budget and you determine if it's a reasonable budget, I would encourage you all to look at that and recognize that these are a little bit desperate times. Today, we, we're, we have a somewhat neutral budget before us right now, right? There's a proposed budget with a little bit of savings here, but keep in mind that if you're going to sustain tax rate over the next several years, you can't address it as the year approaches. You gotta be forth, you gotta be forthright. So think about what's going to happen next year. This may get worse next year. Right here, you can solve it today, this year. Next year may not be that same thing. So. Again, I just.
Like the four of us today, I was there the whole afternoon plus more, putting up tents for the Chamber of Commerce for their market. That, that's our labor, that's our cost, but when we get out of that, absolutely zero nothing. So we don't do just run the little pretty programs until the kids. We do a lot more.
And that's why I'm saying.
Yeah. Can I say something, Doug?
Your budget, but I think this group to help us know really what the true cost is for a taxpayer, we have a, a great Chamber of Commerce. You know, we have a great Academy Festival.
Yeah, you know, well, people know how much we.
Exactly. I know what the cost is to these, to this group. I know it. That's a significant amount of resource. It's a significant amount of money. And if they were to turn around and bill us, I'm going to jump ten feet high. Like, because now I got a budget.
What?
So I just, maybe some of the way we're dealing with things throughout all of these budgets, parts and pieces, when it comes to setting up tents for this or that, or loaning out buildings for nonprofits or whatever, we can only do that for so much. Everybody's going to come knocking looking for a handout, and we can do what we can, but I think we're at a point where we are doing more than we can. And we need to look at that a little bit closer. That's all I'm saying. And it's not just, it's overall.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I got something real quick. So I, I definitely think we should go back to separating parks and recreation so we can really get good numbers. Um, because again, maybe some of that temporary seasonal staff could be working with the, the fields and the parks and that. I do know, um, I'm, I'm a young family. I have two young kids. Uh, I can tell you right now for a fact that my son was not prepared to go to school this, the first year he went to school. He was shy. He refused to talk to anybody in public. Uh, he was very reserved and you couldn't bring him anywhere. You couldn't do anything with him. I signed him up for the recreation program, and when he came out of that first year recreation, he was a totally different kid. The staff there cares about the kids. They work with the kids individually, and I don't think this is something we need to pull from the kids. I definitely think we need to look at the revenue and look at how we're charging things and also look at how the rec is being charged. Because, you know, they get charged for things like using the school gym when they need it, which is something that it's a town department. Why, you know, why is one town department charging the other for things like this? But I definitely think we need to review the fee schedules. We need to review, you know, the, the seasonal work and, and assign it to the programs. But I definitely don't think that a town that's trying to attract young families should start cutting the, the recreation part of the, of the rec department.
So what you're saying is there's no fat trip there?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm just.
That's what I understood.
No, definitely not. I'm just saying we need to identify where the costs are for the labor, the programs and everything. And we need to work on the fee structure so that we can cover the cost of these programs so that we don't have to cut the programs. If something has to be cut, sure, we can work on that and look at that. But I'm just saying, let's first look at the fees for the summer camp. Let's look at the fees for, for the ice skating and let's make sure they get those fees. If they're charging for ice skating and they're paying labor, it shouldn't be going to a slush fund. It should be going to cover the cost of the labor first. You know, those are all things we should look at before we start looking at, let's get rid of, uh, hockey or let's get rid of baseball. Let's make sure everything can officially, effectively self-fund itself. And maybe baseball has to fund hockey because baseball takes more money than hockey, but I definitely think we need to look at, at a, a better funding structure for all the programs.
And we are trying, but this summer, we knew with COVID it was going to be difficult. Uh, we didn't hire anybody for the food program. Sam and I did the cooking. Going there at five thirty, six o'clock every morning, make sure the food is ready so we could save on labor because we knew we needed extra staff, extra kids for six feet of fire and all that. So we are trying our darn best to, to save on everything.
I, 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 um, I commend you for, 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 for that, and I know that you are, but, um, I guess really what I'd like to see is, is if you could maybe get a, in contact with a couple of schools and see how their fee structures work for some of their activities, if we're somewhat in line. Um, I, I think we need to keep track a little bit closer of your actual expenses. I mean, we're, you're, we're not putting the labor cost where it belongs here. The labor cost is just general and, and we don't know where it is. You're putting tents up for the chamber. You have no idea what, what your actual cost is. You did it. And I'm sure the chamber is happy that you did it, but, but somehow somebody should keep track at least of the hours and how many people were there. So.
Well, look in the minutes I went to Casino's town manager because she had asked us to do that, and it could be like a couple of months and I got it all done for the team of the labor of every single program we had.
So why did we stop?
She asked me a one-time deal, give to her, and I didn't.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I, I'd like to just see like, it, it's not a hard thing to really break down if you really take a look at it. And I think it would help you guys too, if, if you had a good idea of where your actual costs are, you know? We can start looking at revenue. We can start, you know, if you make a few call, phone calls to some of the school departments, find out what they're charging for a soc, a soccer program at whatever age level and if they've got a hockey program or baseball or, I mean, I don't think that that's a hard.
Well, we're part of the NMCR, we're the Main Community Recreation Association, and we're meeting here in Madawaska as a matter of fact next Wednesday.
So.
And our fees within the county are pretty darn close to one another.
What you charge the kids?
The only time we have staff is for our youth activities and our skating. Otherwise than that, uh, soccer, basketball, seminar, you know, we're there, he's cultural assistant, we, he takes the team, I take the team, we each other. Soccer, we had what eighty?
Well, I, I, I guess I'm, I, I, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning what you two are doing or, or what your staff is doing, but are you in line in charging the individuals the right amount, you know? Are we getting enough money, enough income to, 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 to offset the, the expense there? And, and we need to see the expense side, and that includes the labor.
We'll, uh, we'll get, we'll get those answers for you next Wednesday.
To the taxpayer, I think thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars a month, seasonally.
Well, you're talking about the whole.
Yeah, you're talking about parks and bathrooms and everything. If you break down just the summer activities, you're looking at forty-three thousand dollars, uh, give or take some, so.
We're talking, we're looking at the whole budget.
Right, right, yeah.
Well, and if, if like I said, like we're talking about, if, my, my point was not that you're not doing what you're supposed to do. I mean, I, I.
Absolutely.
We were together this weekend. So, so I, I, I get it. It just, I also know that there's a lot of services that you provide that are really not, you know, something that you get credit for. And so we, we see this budget, it's like, whoa, this is kind of big, but you know, you have other, a lot of other events or groups or people using the facilities that you don't get credit for, and then you get eaten alive by us for your budget. So somehow we have to either pretend you're charging, uh, for the trade show and all these other things so we can at least see and, and justify, um, the, the wages that we have here. You know, I'm not saying they're not justifiable, and I'm not saying that this is not right. It's, or, I mean, it, it just, it's not set up in a way that, that, um.
You know, the, the, the sweet spot is, is finding the price that won't hurt.
Yeah.
Yeah, but last year we had, what, a hundred and forty was the record year? It was a hundred and four. And the sweet spot is finding that price point that doesn't break their bank. Uh, I think if you could elaborate, uh, Diane and Sam for us. The rec department picks up where the school leaves off for working families. You know, in, in essence, the kids are, are there. It's all day. And so working parents can continue to work. And should that be a taxpayer-funded expense? That depends on, you know, you, you, you can have your opinion and you can have your opinion, and both of those opinions are valid. They are truly, but, you know, I think, I think that you, in, in, all that I can ask is that in your decision-making, and, and they're going to give us some more numbers here and I'll try to bring some clarity here. Don't, you can't, you got to see the forest from the trees here. You got to see that the value in the rec department and what it does for working families for attracting new people to the community, uh, from away. They look for a school. They look for a good school. They look for rec, if they have kids, right? And so, um, all in all, you know, you have to take that into, into consideration. Sometimes you can't put, you can't quantify the value to that. You know, what's the value? If we brought, if there were ten working families that depended on the rec department, there's, there's value there. And so, but does, does it necessarily have to be funded at this level by the taxpayers? Maybe not. So, you know, it's, um, there's a lot to consider, you know, there's a lot to consider. Madawaska has a fantastic rec department. They have a fantastic, they got their, their, their camp. They don't just have programs. They're a camp for the day. Uh, they have a fantastic food program. Bar none, the, the people that audit the food program has basically said, you know, after last year, they came in, they, they came in to see me before they went there, um, to let me know that they were going to be doing the audit for the food program. And the two ladies made it a point to come see me after the fact, to send their praises because they said, there was no department, there's no food program in the state of Maine run as good as this one. And so, well, why is that? Because we're giving them the tools they need to do the work that they need to do. And so, um, there's no, um, absolutely. Can we, can we provide more data to you? We can't, you know, um.
But it all pivots on, on what Chris mentioned, that when the lean days are upon you, uh, you have tough decisions to make. And, and we have to, best we can, uh, separate the needs from the wants.
Can I, I think I, I'd like to ask you a question that would be helpful to them in their process, if you might. I, i- if they're coming out with a price point that causes them to lose thirty percent of enrollment, you know, where's, where's the balance? And you could say, well, you know, you need to jack up your prices by fifty percent. And fifty percent of the people drop out of the program. We've gone nowhere more. I'm not counting them and doing the math, but we've hurt ourselves in that respect too. And so I think, you know, oftentimes I challenged them when we did, we had the COVID issues and, and we didn't know if we were going to have a program. And we didn't know if people were going to be interested in the program, and we didn't want to make any assumptions. We put out a survey to see whether or not parents would be interested in sending your kids to a COVID compliant program camp, if you will. I don't know if I could set out a survey and ask people if they're willing to pay more. I'm not sure if we would get the same willingness for people to say absolutely, you know, we're, we're there. It'd be nice to be able to get that feedback to say, well, you know, we, we feel based on our survey that we could probably charge thirty percent more without hurting our enrollment. Because if we bring up the prices and we hurt our enrollment, we've gone nowhere. And I can tell you, I've been the recipient of phone calls from time to time, people critical about the rates that we charge for rec. I don't think it's a lot of money. I mean, we charge for basically, what do we charge for the season?
It was two hundred dollars for, uh, for holding six feet.
You know, that's food included. You, you're not going to get that kind of, that's, that's, that's a bargain.
So I think by providing more information will better help you than, the way I see it, I think you can better spell out those areas that are more or less essential to be a rec department. I mean, you're a rec department, right? So rec departments do, they create activities for you, right? And so I think separating the parks and rec from each other and keeping those separate, you can better define. Even if you don't have to do it in this cycle, you can separate them in the picture. Israel rap now. One thing I do know is that this town is always very supportive of nonprofits and any function of, Academy Festival, for example. If I go up there and I say, hey, I need seven tents, I need all hands on deck, Academy Festival is not going to charge for that. I can go up there and do that building anytime I want, Academy Festival is not going to charge for that. But I don't think in the budget, it's reflective of the cost of those things for that department, right? So we don't know what that is because we're not seeing it. And on the flip side of that, if I want to come to this school to borrow a cafeteria, see Academy Festival, I don't have to pay to rent the cafeteria, but I got to pay for staff number B here. I got to pay for cooking. I got to pay for janitors. Okay, so think about those things as you're working through the budgets. I can use the building, but it ain't free for them. So why should it be free for this group? So it may be some additional fees that nonprofits aren't used to. Maybe we got to go down that road, but again, we can't do it all.
So we work thirty-seven hours.
Okay, um, so I, I guess really we're, we're, we're all with, with the same idea that more information from you guys will really, um, set the tone here so we can see the, the whole picture. So if we can have that.
We'll go back to the budget about four or five years ago when it was separated and check those two budgets and plug in these figures into those two budgets where it was separated.
Can I ask a quick question? Tent rentals, do you get any fees for that?
No, that goes into the slush.
Okay.
Tent, tent rental fees, we have.
They don't get it.
They don't get it. So they have to set it up. It's their expenses, but they don't get any money, right?
Yeah.
That's interesting.
We've, I'm not sure if we've covered that, but we've, uh, the tent rental business was really like all over the county there for a while. As far as Mars Hill, and we, we pared that back. So no, I mean, it was too much. We had staff all over the countryside, uh, working hard on these tents when we needed them here. Uh, I get it. That was a revenue, it was viewed as a revenue source. And it was, but when you sit there and you track the expenses, putting a pickup on the road and putting staff out there, and God forbid, one of those staff gets hurt setting up a tent in Mars Hill, that's going to hit our workers' comp mod grid and affect our workers' comp grid for all of our departments. So we convinced the board, uh, two years ago that we needed to, we felt that we needed to draw the line closer to just touch, just service to communities or, or requests from communities touching this town. We're not going to go beyond that because if we really did the math, you know, the reason we were out there that far is because it, we were charging not enough money and it was a deal, and we weren't making money with it for sure. So we, we, we brought that back closer to us. Uh, and the rec department has really worked hard at fixing up their tents. The, a lot of the revenue that's associated with tents, uh, we use to fund the, the repairs of those tents because they are a high maintenance kind of item. So, okay.
Do we make money or lose money renting tents, including the labor and the vehicle and the piping and the money involved with repairs?
Is it a moneymaker or are we taking a lot?
Both of them.
I think, I think we're breaking even right now.
Is it worth it? It's not. They recommend it, they're running the show.
I.
It's a service.
Look, the Canadian festival needs tents, we don't charge them for it, and so.
Obviously, they can go get them in the back room and set them up. And if they need to be repaired, they can fix them if they do them that bad.
It's easier said than done.
But the people need to understand, Gare, that's where we're going at with this, or where I started this whole conversation, right? This is one of the departments that I hear the most, cut it, cut it, cut it, cut it, cut it. So I'm really trying hard to bring to light, like, all of these things they do that aren't reflected in here. Um, I know easier said than done, but, but.
It's not a benefit to their, to their.
To, right, and they.
So if it's not a benefit, it's gonna make them look bad, because I'm gonna make the number higher.
Well, in this particular case, anyway, I mean, yeah, I could, I can, I can, I can understand that, that argument, because you don't even have the figures, and yet you're saying it's awfully close, and yet it, you could be in the red.
Without crunching the numbers hard, hard, there, I think that just servicing our lo- local the way we are, we're able to pick up enough revenue so we can supplant our, our reserves to basically fix, make the repairs. We still need the tents to provide for stuff here in town, you know, like the Canadian festival and stuff. And it's a big job to set up those tents, and you can't, you know, you have to know how to set up those tents to set them up. You can't ask people just to.
But for the price we pay, we have to send two guys out to wherever with a truck and put that up, set it all up, tear it all back down, fold it, whatever they gotta do, put it back away, and what we charge.
You better charge enough to.
For the tent.
That's right, you better charge enough.
You know, I don't see them making a benefit to their department at all.
See, if, 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 if the tent's gonna go up for the Chamber of Commerce, if the tent's gonna go up for the Canadian festival, these people have separate budgets, so that should be built into their, their budget.
Correct.
And not come out of their budget to make them look bad.
Yeah, right.
Well, rent the tent for three hundred, you guys send it up.
Uh, the tent rental, I've, I've looked at some of the figures of the tent rental. And the tent that uh Mr. J D Irving rents for the uh Can-Am Dog sled race in Fort Kent, if you look at the tent there, um, it's not that much more elaborate than what these people put up. That, that job is done every year by a commercial tent out of Sussex, New Brunswick, and I've seen the number that Mr. Irving pays for that tent. Just his tent rental for the two days would fix your budget pretty cool. Keep that in mind when you're letting, when you let out the tents. Especially with two of your men or people.
You know, but, you know, and there's an argument there that, that, you know, these tents would serve this community, especially the nonprofits, but once you start getting beyond that, all your costs start to get up, up there, and, and so we need to, we need to take a, a close look at this.
Which is why we pulled back.
I understand, I understand. I don't know how much more we're doing privately right now for, for weddings or anniversaries or anything like that, but, but anyway, I mean, there certainly needs to be revenue to, to, to match the expense there. All right, anything else there beyond the tents? Anything else for, uh, the rec department? Okay, I guess we're.
On the electric utility, it looks like two years in a row it's exceeded the budget. Is there any reason why it exceeded the average budget? It's showing a proposed budget of twenty-one thousand one hundred fifty. After the past two years, you then paid your twenty-two thousand eight, twenty-three thousand respectively. I'm just wondering if there's something that's going on with basic something, or is that a char, you know, a charge that we weren't striking that, are we under budgeted or?
I just think if you look at the budgeting history, it's, it's pretty static, but if you also look at the actuals from the last, past two years, which are your two right-hand columns,
Mm-hmm.
uh, that number is pretty close, you know, they, they trend, they follow each other pretty close. So I just think that we've historically under budgeted that, that utilities, that electricity line.
So we're off by what, two thousand roughly? No, fifteen hundred? Okay.
Are you guys suggesting that would, that should be increased?
Maybe increase it to reflect what they're actually using. If it's gonna con- if they plan on going over again this year, it should probably be raised.
Okay, so I'll, you wanna put an extra fifteen hundred there?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, it's not like if they're gonna say, ooh, we get to turn on the lights for five minutes longer. I mean, that includes the ball feel light, everything else, so.
Okay. Okay, we're good with the rec for now.
Thanks, guys.
Article five, to consider Department one twenty general assistance budget.
All right. We are mandated, as far as general assistance is concerned, we are mandated by law to provide general assistance. We have to budget for that. This budget is offset by revenue as well. So let me check to see where in the revenue side here. Uh, but we are reimbursed for, for general assistance that we provide at a rate of, it went up this year to, I'm gonna say seventy-five percent reimbursement rate. Yeah. So, uh, I know I'm jumping ahead, I'm looking at the revenue budget for GA. It's a one-liner. Uh, it's, we, we anticipate five thousand dollar reimbursement rate. Um, you'll see that we took in only twenty-eight hundred seventy-three dollars last year in reimbursement. Uh, and you'll notice that we've been trending down on general assistance. Uh, so the reason why we didn't bring in the five thousand of revenue that we projected is because we spent less than, on the expense side for GA than we would put in for reimbursements. I think we might also be one, one reimbursement off from the state of Maine uh before the fiscal year closed out. It wouldn't have been much anyway to affect the bottom line. Um, so generally speaking, um, we have a um our general assistance administrator is, is Donna, she's right there, and she does a fantastic job. Uh, Donna Leonard's up there. The process to administer GA is dictated, uh, it's, it's defined in statute. And uh, it's a big job uh to verify when somebody comes in, they need, they really need to qualify for GA. GA is supposed to be the last resort for assistance. Um, meaning if they come to West, there's no other options for them. And so, it's, it's, it's a really big job uh for the GA administrator to run through an application, verify that the applicant is, uh, that what their income might be, that they're not misspending their income, because it's a penalty against them if they're misspending income. Uh, it's a big job, she, she needs to uh make sure that the applicants are looking for other available resources, financial assistance, be it ACAP or LIHEEP or whatever. You know, sometimes there's, you know, uh, Donna is very resourceful in her job, uh, and the numbers reflect that. And so I always, um, sing her praises when I get a chance, uh, for the work that she does with GA. Um, part of the budget, which is not necessarily the state's GA program, is the health officer. Uh, we have a health officer that receives a stipend, twenty-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, her salaries are born basically out of the town admin budget as a clerk, but she is the GA administrator. Uh, so, uh, going down, um, through there, we're proposing a pretty, just basically a flat budget from last year, seeing that, you know, we, um, we didn't spend as much as we, as we thought we would. That's only because it, it depends on the requests, you know, and we might see an uptick in GA applications for people that actually qualify, uh, or we might not. But, but, you know, Donna, this, this past year's activities for GA, uh, people that qualified for GA got GA. People that did not qualify for GA did not get GA. And so, um.
So assuming an individual comes in and puts an application in, qualifies for general assistance, uh, in what form does that come to the recipient?
Uh, everything is done through, uh, there are no direct payments. We pay vendors. So if it's a rental assistance, we have, we, we pretty much have all the landlords, um, at one point in time are, have been a vendor, um, we pay directly to the landlord. So there are guidelines for, and you'll see this at some point in time, Dan, that you're, every year we get the updated appendices for GA, which are the maximums for, we would provide for a family of two in a house and two-bedroom, whatever, or an apartment. There are, there are guidelines for what can be given for assistance in different areas.
If there's work available for the individual, can you direct the individual to some employment?
We do. Donna has a list of places where there are jobs, and she keeps a current list of available jobs, and she directs people to work search.
Does the applicant, can the applicant refuse? Can he say, oh, I don't like to do that?
Nope.
But you send him to my house to call me, I get twenty-five pork to put in, I pay twelve dollars a night.
So, the way, the way that, there is a work search requirement that we do, and Donna, can you elaborate maybe as to how many? Uh, if somebody comes in and we require them to do a work search, how many places? And they can't be repeat places, they have to have a mix of, I went here and I went there.
Typically between three and five a week.
Saw today that Twin Rivers is posting for, they need laborers. Talked to several contractors in town that they can't find help. So, you know, that, that part bothers me. I didn't always pick and choose the jobs that I worked at.
Well, they're.
Paid the bills.
I- if there are able-bodied people to work, you know, we do the work search requirement on them when they come in. So, and if they don't follow through on that, then.
And a lot of times I'll run into places where I know they're hiring, so I go do these, here's the job, I'm gonna do this place, and I'll see what's we.
No.
So I really.
Do you follow up with the places that they've applied to see if they've actually applied?
If you come back with an application and I can sit down and communicate with them, I can call.
Okay.
Um, a lot of times they never went, or if you say there's an application there, if there's none, and if that's the case, then they get.
Yeah, 'cause as, as a business owner, I've had plenty of people come in and say, hey, can I have an application? Oh, I'm not hiring. I don't want a job, I just need an application.
Yeah, I'm certainly not hiring, that's part of the, yeah.
Yeah.
But.
It would be a lot easier for the GA administrator to not do that amount of work, to verify quali- whether or not they're doing the work search and they actually qualify. It's a lot of work. I, I did it myself in the other, in Sinigat when I was there, and it's a lot of work, and a lot of time is spent on that, so, um.
And some of the people I see, I know, can't go to Twin Rivers, I know, can't do certain things, and just really anything like that. But I, before, had someone, the way the kids were getting hired, it's like, well, Bill, I'd be like, hey, yeah, I'm hiring, said, yeah, yeah, here you go. Go for an interview, and, you know, stuff like that, I can do, but.
The rec department could use a lot of these people. Push a lawnmower. Underbox.
In the, in, in the past, the town has done, uh, that work fair thing, we call that work fair. Uh, a lot, sometimes that ends up being a babysitting job for, for department heads, and it's more work than it's worth. So, you know, we kind of, we use the work search, that seems to work well. But we do require the work fair. If, if we, we do, it is a requirement that if we had an opportunity for you to work here for us, you can't refuse that, 'cause you would, you know, that would be, that would disqualify them, so. Uh, but it's something that we, we try to stay away from as much as we can.
What's the, uh, three, thirty-three hundred dollars for safety and wellness?
Uh, that is, uh, our safety and wellness under our, uh, I wish I had more details. All the departments have a, a safety and wellness budget, and I think they can apply for, for boots and a pair of boots and things like that. That's where that comes from. I can get more details for that on.
No, just curious.
Wasn't prepared for that question.
No, but it's a big figure for.
It's a benefit provided in the handbook, and it's in the handbook, and you have to have some money budgeted there, because if somebody does come in, an employee comes in and wants to take advantage of that benefit, you have to provide it, 'cause it's in the handbook. I mean, you, unless.
I, I, I think, and you're, you're helping me out a lot, Lori, here, um. We basically look at the number of employees that we have and how much money that is worth, and that's the number that's there, but you can see that many employees are not taking full advantage, they're not taking advantage of it, right?
No, that's fine, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only four hundred and seventy dollars used up until now. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Good, we're all set with article five, article six, to consider Department seven hundred insurance budget.
So right here, um, this is one of those departments that I alluded to where, it's not really a department, but a, a budget line or expense department or whatever, uh, where we actually have hard figures now. Usually when we're working on this, it's a projection. Uh, we, we talk to our underwriters and say, listen, you know, what are you thinking for renewal increases and? Uh, but this here is, these are actual uh figures, uh, and we were able to reduce, uh, our budget for insurances uh, based on previous year's expenditures and what we know is, is the bill coming in. Which are, which is, uh, which starts at the top, which is unemployment compensation, ten thousand dollars. Workers' compensation, uh, which is on par from last year, workers' compensation, seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars. Uh, property and casualty for all of our facilities, uh, eighty thousand two hundred dollars. Bonds in excess, that's, uh, public officials' liability insurance, those are insurances that are required um, for a total of, um, under your other insurance of eighty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh, our total overall budget for insurance townwide, this does not include health insurance. This is property casualty and, and unemployment compensation and workers' comp of a hundred sixty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars, down from one seventy-three, eight thirty-six.
The unemployment, the unemployment is a state thing, isn't it, Donna?
Yeah, it, 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 it's a, it's a funded pool, which means that.
But, but the rates, the rates that we pay.
Yeah, we don't set the rates.
That's that.
Yeah. It is a funded pool, me, for municipalities, and what that means is that, uh, we, our contributions fund a pool. And that is like a self-funded pool, and so we would, right now, more or less, probably have about twenty-three thousand dollars in that fund pool. Uh, I had to ta- and I know that number bec- off the top of my head, because when uh, COVID hit and the unemployment benefits came in, it was a lot of discussion with town managers and MMA about is this gonna hit our, our pool? You know, if people, uh, go out on unemployment because of, they could, because of COVID, uh, under, under the executive orders, uh, would it have hurt our, our pool? And it, it wouldn't have, because it was gonna be handled by the feds. Uh, so we have about twenty-three thousand in our, in our pool right now. Um, so in other words, we could potentially lay off, if we were to lay off people, pay out twenty-three thousand dollars worth of claims before we would have to start increasing that fund pool again, and our premium would go up to do that. So, ten thousand dollars, uh, is a little more than we need, but it funds our pool as well.
Has the town received, uh, any funds, uh, from the various COVID disaster funds, relief funds?
The only thing we have, Dan, right now is we have a, in a, a, talked about this there, one of our last meetings. Uh, in the FEMA portal, we call it the portal, 'cause it's an online thing, uh, COVID-related expenses that we're gonna submit our expenses to for things that we had to buy, signage, sanitary, like sanitizer, equipment, uh, whatever, anything COVID-related. And I think we were somewheres in the vicinity of like seven thousand dollars, but there is no, other than that, under the CARES Act, I believe, CARES- But there is no, other than that, under the CARES Act, I believe, CARES Act, the initial funding that went to the states, municipalities, under the federal rule, municipalities under five hundred thousand dollars couldn't apply for reimbursement. There was nothing there for them. So there isn't a single town in the state of Maine or city that qualified for CARES Act funding.
That was Susan Collins's comment, that there's not a town in the state of Maine that was going to get a penny.
Or, or county, for that matter.
Or county.
Or some counties, for that matter.
And the other two insurances, the property and casualty and the bond in excess, are these private companies that, that cover the town?
So, our, our unemployment compensation is funded, it's through MMA, unemployment. Workers' comp is, is through MEMIC, which comes through UIG, United Insurance Group. And our P and C, property casualty, and our bond is all through our local agent here in town, but they shop around. I mean, different, they have their different...
That's my point. Is there, is there any wiggle room? Is there any negotiation process in this for best price? Are there other companies that they're competing against?
I think that, you know, some municipalities, look, we use, we've used UIG. Their, their services are fantastic. We need them for something. They're there. They answer our questions. I think they, they shop competitively. They work to keep any rate increases down. You will note, for instance, is that, where is it here? There, there is, like, for instance, some insurance in the board's budget, the governing body budget, for the public officials' liability. There's another section of public officials' liability that went up by about a thousand bucks, and that's because of the ongoing cases that we have with a pending lawsuit. And that insurance, it's public officials' liability insurance that's, that's taking it, are covering that. And so it's driving up the cost of our insurance. They're paying for the, for the cost of, of the attorneys on that case.
The insurance companies, from personal experience, insurance companies rate number two of people that I despise, second to politicians, because of the abuse of just, just my personal policies. When I threatened to cancel, I said, look, I can no longer afford them. For twelve months, dropped eight hundred dollars. Eight hundred dollars. So I, I asked them, this was after four days, well, they shopped around for me, and I said, so last year, where did this eight hundred dollars go? You know, so it pays to shop. Keeps them on their toes.
The options for us to shop around, it's UIG or, or MMA with their property and casualty group.
Well, pin them one against the other.
Is UIG our local taxpayers?
Yes.
Give them a ten percent benefit. When we used to put out bids for police cars, when we had three car dealerships here in town, they had a ten percent margin over out of town bidders.
Which, which I think is very fair.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, you know. You give the, get the local a ten percent advantage, and there's nothing wrong with it.
I think that they're pretty competitive, Dan. I mean, we haven't shopped, we haven't shopped out. I know that the school, the school just recently went with, with UIG. So, you know, they, they picked that up, so I think they had to sharpen their pencil and keep their pencil sharp. And, and so the school went with UIG for after a long period of not being with them, so...
Yeah.
Any other question?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, no, I'm just questioning at this point, is there any other questions or issues? Nope. Are we good to move on?
Yep.
Where do we add? Article Six to Consider Departments, no, sorry. Article Seven to Consider Department Seven Ten Intergovernmental Budget.
So, within the intergo, within the intergovernmental budget is the county tax. It's there, it was there in the Senegat Intergovernmental Budget when I was there. It's really not something that, I don't feel like it should be there. I think it's, it's an assessment, just like the schools' assessment to the, to the, to the towns, if you will. But we, we show it, and we park that expense in our intergovernmental budget. So you can see that the increase there was, was over last year. They were at four twenty-seven, three twelve. This year, they're at...
Four seventy-two.
Four seventy-two, four, seven oh three. That's about forty-nine thousand dollars. That's, that's one of the expenses that I alluded to that we don't have any control over. The only, the county budget is approved by the county commissioners, and they do have a public hearing process. And budgets are made available for, for people to review, and so they can, people can, town officials and people at large can, can go to those public hearings and weigh in on those budgets. But once the county commissioners adopt the budget, it's nothing that we can act on, okay? Valley Recycling Facility, so that budget is four seventy-two, seven oh three, if I haven't said that. Last year, excuse me, moving on down in our, in our, what is really our intergovernmental budget, Valley Recycling Facility, which is comprised of Madawaska, Senegat, Frenchville, Fort Kent. Yes, as the member municipalities. And then also, we pick up Grand Isle, but they are not a member municipality. We charge them a per ton fee what it costs us, what we, we know it is our cost per ton to dispose, you know, the all-in number, per ton, plus a premium for them not being a member. VRF's budget went up from four forty-seven to four seventy. So, a couple of things. We, VRF, and we are the administrators of VRF here in Madawaska. It is a revenue department for us, if you will. So, three years ago, Town of Madawaska picked up the administration of VRF. We bill VRF twenty-two thousand dollars a year to do the admin for VRF. So we have a position in that, in, in our finance department that is paid for by this, okay? We have a position in the finance department, which is part of the admin that covers that cost. Part of the driver for the increase, the large part of, of the driver for increase to the rate or the overall budget for VRF was Kerjournos, the landfill that we send our ways to. They have to provide VRF six months of notice of a tonnage rate increase, if you will. That, and so they missed the boat the first year. They didn't give us the notice in, in their contractually, you know, we have a contract, VRF has a contract with Kerjournos. They didn't give us enough notice, so they said, fine, we'll wait till next year. This is going to be the per ton rate. Couple of things that had a significant impact on VRF's budget. The bridge closing to trucks and all that traffic having to go through Van Buren or Fort Kent. That had a significant impact on, on the freight. And then also, what recently just happened, which is reflected in this budget, is the increase in the per ton for landfill costs. So, VRF as a whole, they, they do generate some revenue with recyclables. Metal tire, well, tires are not recyclable, it's an expense, but metal, aluminum, components of TVs, there's things that we, cardboard. With what's going on with China, recyclables revenue is down by more than fifty percent. The ton, what we're getting for, for, it's, we lost a lot of revenue, and the, and the expenses went up at the same time. So, we can't control what we're getting, what the market is dictating for recyclable revenue, and we can't control what Kerjournos charging us, our VRF, per, per ton for, to put everything into landfill. It is still cheaper than going to Tri-Community, because we take advantage of the Canadian discount. That helps us tremendously. So, explanation for VRF. Doug and I are, we are the administrators. Doug is the representative for VRF on our board. The airport budget went up a couple of grand. In, within that budget is our operations and capital. Which is fifty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars, sorry. Hyjet Rental, which is to the Madawaska Water District, that's, it's a flat, that, that hasn't moved in years, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Streetlights, I want to talk about that a little bit. You'll see a significant decrease there. Two things. Process that started back when I was in Senegat through the Aristic Municipal Association, which is a bunch of county town managers, worked together to collaborate for a regional project to swap out our LED lights, the streetlights, Cobra Heads. EMEA at the time wasn't interested in swapping their, their energy, the high, you know, the high-energy costs of, of high-pressure sodium. There was a process that started roughly a decade ago, initiated by the City of Almet, that allowed municipalities to purchase the lights from the utility and, and run them and maintain them themselves. And so, two, two things here that drive this number. Number one, the Town of Madawaska, like many communities, opted to purchase the streetlights. We have about four hundred and nineteen or four hundred and twenty-nine streetlights throughout the whole town, not including the, the ones on Main Street here, the deco lights, but the Cobra Heads I'm talking about. We became the owners of those streetlights. It only cost us like fifteen hundred bucks to buy those old depreciated lights. That was part of the cost of the project. The cost of the project to convert those lights was in the vicinity of about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Town financed, through a lease finance program, the cost of that project, okay? Roughly forty-five hundred dollars a month, okay, was basically the rental fee for four hundred and thirty lights. So, our, you know, the combination of not having to pay the rental fees, and then the energy savings to go into LED is dropping our budget from eighty thousand dollars to twenty-one thousand dollars a year. We made an investment, and yes, we're going to have to, within this budget, where we have money in there to fix a burnt-out light. You know, we anticipate maybe a few burnouts per year. That's on us to fix, you know. So, EMEA is not going to change a light anymore. It's going to be us hiring a contractor to go there, like... And the person that, the contractor that did the installation was R.L. Todd out of Caribou. This project saves the Town of Madawaska over a million dollars over twenty years, when you're factoring in the debt service. So, it's not very often that you have an opportunity to save that kind of money. It's a good project. So, while there was a decrease here in this, there was also some debt servicing incurred, which, you know, I can tell you, if you just bear with me one second, the annual payment for that project was... Thirty thousand five hundred thirteen dollars a year.
Thirty thousand?
Five thirteen. That's, that's in your debt service budget.
Okay.
So it's still, it's still cheaper than, even with the debt service, we're saving money, you know?
Yeah.
The payback is, was roughly two years.
Is the electricity for the streetlights included in that number, or is that somewhere different?
It's, it's included in that number, yeah.
Cool.
Let me get back to where I was. Northern Maine Development Commission, those are our dues that we pay to Northern Maine Development for, we have representation on the NMDC Board. I'm currently the chairman of the Executive Committee. That rotates out, and so we all have a turn at serving there. NMDC provides services to the town. They provide assistance through, they can do grant writing. It's not fully covered. You don't get full grant writing services for eighty-seven hundred dollars, but we do have benefit of, of having their services. They need all, all the municipalities to pay their, you know, they need that for, and we are their governing body. I mean, the, like, I'm on the Executive Board. Every town has, who's a member of NMDC has governed, has a say there. Maine Municipal Association, the forty-three hundred dollars. That gives us, we're in, that gives us a benefit on better costs for what we get for our health insurance. We have access to a tremendous amount of resources, be it whether it's their lobbying branch through the Legislative Policy Committee, working on behalf of municipalities, to keeping all town managers and the town officials apprised of legislative changes, new laws, things in the hopper. They are our go-to for all things municipal. They are, we couldn't do it without them. Chamber of Commerce, you'll notice that they, the increase went to fifteen, fifteen thousand this year, or the request was for fifteen, up above ten thousand seven hundred sixty-five. So, I wish, you know, shame on me for not having the Chamber here tonight, because I was thinking in my mind they were in the social services budget, but they're not. They're in our intergovernmental. I'd like for them to be here to discuss this line. We'll come back to it. The Chamber is struggling financially, and they've, they've asked for more money. We, as a town, are having discussions with the Chamber, like Heath's office and the Rick Department. And I know Doug is involved in those discussions. To have, we want to have a vibrant downtown. We want to bring the Chamber on board for programming and, and things where we can bring people into our downtown. It's going to require the, the effort that we're trying to, we're going to be putting forward involves getting all of our civic agencies, our historical society, all of the, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, any organization that benefits this town, working with the town and the Chamber to bring people in, into our town. And so our plan, we do have a plan to try to utilize the Chamber more. I think we think, I think that there's a vision that the Chamber can be reinventing itself, to be from the old Chamber model, if you will, to something a little bit different than what it is now. We're talking about that right now and trying to figure out what that might be. The Boost Program was an example of, of a success story where we could collaborate. And, and I think just the Boost Program, and there's already discussions about how, what, things that they may be able to do to self-fund that without taxpayer dollars. And so, they, I have, they have my support, just like every, every other intergovernmental budget here. I think we would like to use them more for the betterment of the town. And they're going to have to try to reinvent themselves in order to do that. And so, with that being said, you know, that Doug might have something to add here, and you guys all have your say on that, if you want, at this point.
I think we're going to struggle to explain to taxpayers a fifty percent increase on one single line item.
I will say that historically, Dan, we funded them at a higher level than this, but it was pared back many years ago.
So, so, so just to, to give you a little more information there, I mean, we really are trying to incorporate the Chamber to be a lot more active as far as activities and such when it comes to the downtown. I mean, we're going to have them involved in almost every, or at least make contact with every nonprofit, and we've already started that process. As a matter of fact, we're going to be, we're going to be meeting with someone tomorrow. But, but the Chamber, I, I, in my mind, anyway, will take the active role when it comes to activities that are going to be transpiring in the downtown. I mean, it'll go through the town and, and of course, some of these projects will get approved one way or another, but, but I'm really hoping that the Chamber takes the ball beyond that. You know, they're going to take that activity, and they're going to make the contact with, with the organizations, and they're going to make sure that, you know, that there's activity going on, on a regular basis down there, and, you know. Again, with, with what we are all facing with, with COVID-19, I mean, some of the programs that they normally have income just got canceled this year. There's nothing going on, and, and so, you know, I, I think an additional five thousand dollars here is going to be very well spent. And, and, I mean, only time will tell at this point, but I think that Sharon can keep, keep, keep the ball rolling, and I think we're going to see a lot of activity. The activity that, that I think all of you want to see, I mean, it's important that, that the Chamber's involved. And, you know, they have a lot of contacts beyond... And, you know, they have a lot of contacts beyond what we have and uh I think that, I think they'll do a good job.
I, I agree to some degree, but looking at it strictly from a financial perspective, this will need to be monitored closely and measured. I know I sound like the one string guitar, but it's return on investment. This needs to be revisited at a given point in time. We need to ask ourselves, what is the return on our investment?
No doubt. No doubt, Dan. I mean, there's no question in, you know, um I think we all saw the writing on the wall um with this issue a long time ago. It i- it is exactly that. That's what we wanna see. So we're pushing in that direction because we want that activity. We, we want things going on down there. So this is a way of pushing this in the right direction and hopefully uh we'll see, we'll see within a year's time, you know, whether that's been worthwhile or not.
Not singling out the Chamber of Commerce, but whether it be the chamber, whether it be the rec department, the ambulance department, public works. If in three hundred and sixty-five days we revisit this and we find that our return on investment is absolutely nothing, will people take offense to an individual pointing it out?
Well, I don't, I mean, I, I don't know how to answer that, but but yet, yeah, I mean, if 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 certainly you and I are on the board next year and and we're able to come up here and say, nothing has been done, that's a pretty clear sign that that we messed up. But I, I, I really, I mean, I think that this is a uh, this is where the town wants to go. This is really how we're gonna push this town forward, which is what we've been advocating for so long. You know, so, so I believe anyway, along with our Community Development Office and Sharon and myself and Gary and and you know, that we're going to be able to make that move, that we're gonna be able to see the activities that you guys wanna see. And and the ideas are coming right now in hordes. I mean, we're having a lot of thoughts and a lot of ideas. We met um last week um and discussed some of those ideas, but but anyway, we're gonna put it on paper and we're gonna, we're gonna I, I certainly believe anyway that you will not have any questions about this in a year's time. Yep.
So I, I, I have to, I wish she was here because I feel like this is, I mean, not a fair conversation. I pointed out in the very first meeting when she explained that she was working, helping Grand Isle or clubbing Grand Isle or group write a grant. Grand Isle gives a hundred dollars, but her time was being spent there. We're asking for taxpayer money for a chamber that's called the San John Valley Chamber of Commerce, but there's no other towns that are really giving anything substantial. And I question where the membership is and when did the chamber become, like, we used to fund more, but there was membership and activity and there was a chamber board and there was a, I mean, and and I, I have, I have a very hard time with this and and the direction, um why is the chamber, like, you, you have an active chamber board that have been working there, butts off and the same people over and over for years and years, but where's the rest of their membership? Why is the town now directing the chamber and activities and helping and why are the businesses that are not, are members of this chamber not stepping up? You know, I, I, I just have a, a hard time to go ask for taxpayer money when it's not even called the Madawaska Chamber of Commerce. And I know it's not fair, you know, they're not here to defend that, but I, I can't, I can't even see supporting an increase. I don't know. I have a hard time with it now. And and this was something I said, like, we did have a little issue, her and I. This was all said way before that, so I just wanna make sure that that's very clear.
So, so if we, if we, if we go back maybe a few years ago, uh before, before Sharon, I mean, I um I don't know, I really wasn't um informed as to the chamber's duties when it came to other communities. And I think that probably was lax and that's why some of the towns do not contribute anymore. They used to. They, I, I do know that that Frenchville did. I don't know about Senegat, but. Yeah, and and so, but the activity there too was also that much as far as what we did for them. But 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 some of their businesses do pay their dues over there and and so um now, whether or not Sharon can rebuild this remains to be seen. You know, I can't, I, all I'm saying is that I think this depleted way before she got here.
I'm not saying that she did anything wrong or depleted anything. I'm saying that um.
Chambers are struggling everywhere.
You know, that, right, and 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 to Dan's point, when you have a town budget that's struggling and you need, like, what came first, right? The chicken or the egg? Is the chamber gonna help us bring activity into the town and make the business more visible and I just, I just.
Well, that's, that's certainly, that's certainly.
I'm gonna vote to increase their budget.
I don't think the town taxpayer should be paying the chamber or other towns. If they're not chipping in.
Yeah. I'd, I'd definitely like to see the budget for the, for the chamber to see, you know, are there any stipends for the board? Maybe they need to cut down on on that or no? I'd just like to see the, the, you know.
You know, the chamber sadly resources are are scarce, huh? Money and um there's the rain. And the chamber, the bulk of their work is, is spent on fundraising to survive. That's sad. That's sad because there just isn't a membership base there to, to give them the resources. Like in a time, in a time like right now, when they need a financial push, they would need the most amount of money to, to come up with something new, to, to shift, to correct course.
I think that's the problem. I think the problem is if the taxpayers are Madawaski are gonna fund it, they don't want, they don't want them to be working for Senegat. We're funding it, they're not chipping in.
You mean like if we're funding it at a hundred percent?
Well, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, but they're not doing, they're not, she's really not doing anything much more than that for the other communities at this point, other than, other than the memberships that that she has there.
I mean, if they were chipping in, paying their fair share, well, then I can understand it. I don't see the taxpayer of Madawaska having to fund that program for other communities, not at the moment, not the way it's set up.
I've got a question for Hank of the chamber. The chamber's been there, and they were there before the dinosaurs came. Is it establishment, is it a function that has outgrown itself? The reason I ask, uh doing business today is totally different than it was even ten years ago. I qualified for a one thousand dollar matching grant here, UDAG grant for advertising uh three years ago. I got a thousand dollar UDAG money. I ended up putting in three thousand of my own money only because I chose to. And we went and the lady we hired, the marketing consultant, she says, I know you're old, you got a phone, she said, you gotta get with the program. This is where it's at today. And I can show you concrete numbers of the cabin rental. For the last three years, we doubled, doubled any previous year, ten-year history. The last three years were double of our biggest year in the first ten years, all on social media. And I believe Madawaska is missing the boat uh on the social media side of things to promote business. And I'm of the mindset that Chamber of Commerce will do.
Well, let me address that just, just in brief, but but honestly, uh the town is moving in that direction as we speak. We are now looking to be online. We are looking to bring the chamber online along with us. And we are looking to have a list of businesses that you can do online. So she has something in front of her so that if you call and you want to find work, but she's not gonna do your advertising.
No, but I, I believe that that's where we missed the boat with our economic development coordinator uh where and I kid you not, uh for a two-month period, uh three-month, uh mid, mid-January to April, three hours, you see me, three hours, three hours on, on, I, I go on the three biggest snowmobile sites. The biggest fish out there is uh New England sled dog. Thirty-four thousand people on that site. Three hours a night, seven nights a week fishing. Personal messages, believe it or not, three hours every night. But we double our income. And I think, and I'm not saying that Keith would need to sit there three hours a day, but I think that part of Keith's job should be contact to the outside world through social media. It's the ticket of the, of the decade, if you will.
You're saying that with respect to what? To c- to bring people into the town of Madawaska?
Uh everything from recreation, new business, uh opportunities.
You know, Dan, I wanna say that all, I don't wanna say all, but but many of the issues that you're bringing up right now are being addressed directly. I mean, directly like within the last two, three weeks. Okay. Okay. Anything else on that issue? What's the next one?
Moving on down.
Yep.
Sidewalk match, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. So that is for the town's share. The town initiated a project a few years back with the Maine Department of Transportation to extend our sidewalks from where the granite sidewalks, from where they end near Fourteenth Ave all the way to Sixteenth Ave because we have a law, a large swath of town that doesn't have the wall. We don't have a whole sidewalk on the Tim Horton side of that. And then we have a section of old sidewalk on, on those north streets. So it's roughly uh four hundred, twenty-five thousand dollar project. The town's share is, is twenty percent. It's an eighty-twenty match. And we've been, we've been budgeting to that. Uh the project is in a three-year work plan with MDOT. Uh the town is committed to the project uh previously. And so we're funding that reserve, our share of that, um for that project. It's gonna start next year. Seventeen-five. Skipping on down.
Um, I have a question about that. Why is it again, is that the same thing again that's in the capital purchase and reserves? Proposed?
I'm not sure. Let me check.
Seventeen fifty, the MDOT twenty-twenty-one sidewalk park match, seventeen five hundred, and then we have it again in this.
That's a good question, Lori. I'm gonna, I'm gonna check that out.
Okay, if you could just check if that's a duplicate, that would save us seventeen thousand dollars.
I'll have to check on that.
Thanks.
Acadian Festival, seventeen thousand two hundred dollars. That was a request that came in pre-COVID. And so right now, uh we're gonna have a discussion on that. The Acadian Festival was canceled this year. Obviously, and there has been some expenses incurred uh by the Acadian Festival. We did pay the chamber to do the administrative, to, to help out with the Acadian Festival. And there also has been some minor expenses incurred before the chamber said, no, we can't. You know, the Acadian Festival Committee working with the chamber said, no, we're not gonna move forward. And so um currently, there's about, Acadian Festival Committee has about twenty-seven thousand dollars in their fund. And we can have discussion about this funding level as to whether or not we wanna keep it there or reduce it since there is no Acadian Festival. Any money is the way that we fund the Acadian Festival. We cut the Acadian Festival an appropriation check. So we, it, it's in our, it's in our coffers. It's in the town's funds. But because it's in an intergovernmental, it's, it's like an assessment. And we will take whatever we fund the Acadian Festival and put that into it, into its separate fund. And that money would not roll into the undesignated fund. It's, it's there. So that being said, with the Acadian Festival not happening this year, with their fund balance being at twenty-seven, we wanna talk about the funding level.
Do you have an idea of how much they've spent this year, rough?
Couple grand, couple, three, four grand maybe.
What's that fig, what are you asking?
Uh if we had an idea of how much they have spent so far.
Well, what's this figure here in that uh year-to-date expense? There are thirteen thousand two?
That's a good question. Oh, well, that, that's, that's because we, we, we cut them the appropriation check. Like I just said, we, we see that as an expense because that's like, like an assessment we pay.
Okay.
And so the money is sitting in their account. It's not sitting in our account because we didn't spend it. It's sitting in the Acadian Festival's account because they didn't spend it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, June thirty. Yeah.
As of November, there was thirty-three thousand. They gave three thousand to the chamber, as he said. And then there was another approximately twenty-eight or twenty-nine hundred spent, I believe.
They did, they did need a new laptop.
On some of the stuff they were trying to get started.
They did need a new laptop um for their, for their stuff.
So that must be what that twenty-eight hundred or whatever that was.
And any money go to the Albert House under the Acadian, but what ultimately?
That's another budget.
It's a different budget, yeah.
So they, they had, they had asked that question.
Yeah, we can't, we can't take, I, I know that in the past, the Acadian Festival was a project of the Historical Society.
Yes.
But every year, the, the, the enabling language in the town meeting warrant tells you how to spend that money. And so even though it was in the past belonged to the Historical, we couldn't repurpose that Acadian Festival money to the Historical without town board approval. And so what the board decided to do uh with friend and John, who were representing the Historical, was uh we bridged them a UDAG loan for eight thousand dollars and the board pledged to fight, to fund the Historical Society for their project. And their, and that's gonna show up in our social service budget that we're gonna discuss probably next week.
But she didn't take the loan.
Yes, she did.
She did?
Yep.
Because she called me and told me she wasn't gonna take it and then she was gonna wait for this to happen.
Uh, the paperwork was executed?
Yeah, okay. I, I don't.
Just last week.
Oh, okay. Then she decided to. All right. Because the last month, she said she wasn't gonna, but.
So just roughly, that leaves about seven thousand dollars unspent yet. I mean, can we just fund it for seven thousand dollars less?
No, seventeen-two they're asking for.
Right, but we, we cut them a check for thirteen-two hundred.
Last year.
Last year.
Okay, so.
Because that's what was budgeted last year, if you look in the.
Ignore that, Jason. That's just confusing. They have twenty-seven thousand right now in their bank account and they're asking for seventeen more.
Okay.
Do they need seventeen more? I would not, I would not appropriate anything. I mean, I wish to hear this too. I wish Jane was here. Why would we have two appropriations for the same?
Coming from the experience on that a little bit, um given there wasn't one, I would never advocate to reduce or take away any type of funding for the Acadian Festival. It's just not in me that I can, I could see not funding that completely, given the fact that it didn't happen this year. Given the situation we're in, right? It's tight. So back to next point, you know, here you're throwing some more taxpayer money into the pot a little bit. I think it's, they have a reasonable amount. Right now, reasonable amount. Had that gone off without a hitch and hope it didn't happen, you know, they'd be close to probably zero budget again, starting next year. So you wouldn't want to defund it, right? But then given the fact that it didn't happen, there's a, there's an option to reduce that funding level this year and help ease the burden elsewhere. That's how I see it.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't typically advocate for that. That's just how I see it.
I mean, I, I would see not funding it this year and then, let's say, giving the eight thousand dollar or appropriating the eight thousand dollars to the house that the previous board said they would work with.
And this budget reflects that request.
Yeah, okay.
On the social services side.
So then I would recommend not funding the Acadian Festival this year.
Keep going.
Is that what you wanna do? Because I'm gonna make a change here. Is that the wish?
I, I, I can't tell you differently at this point. I mean, I, I feel that the figure that they have already sitting in their account is, is I believe enough for them to reestablish that, that festival next year. But but I don't know that for a fact either. I mean, I haven't been involved with the festival just for so many years.
So a typical festival without having assessments and tentacles probably averages around forty thousand dollars. And prior to that, that budget, I believe it was over twelve thousand mark.
Yep.
Typically what the Acadian Festival would see for appropriation from the town.
Yep.
The rest of it was raised through volunteers that blood-swept tears, right? That's how they got their money. That's how we made it happen.
Fundraising.
Fundraising.
Really, this is seed money is really what it is.
So is it enough to make the whole show happen? No, but I think it's a greater start than what they, they deal with in the past. Given the situation, as hard as it is, I, I still think it's functional without funding it for one year. Being the festival did not occur. Because if it would have occurred, it would be at the same situation as you were. Without occurring, you wouldn't do that, right?
Right.
It's a Washington, Washington bank. I mean, it's not a ton of money there. At the end of the day, you're not talking a building.
So you're saying that even if we don't fund it and everything resumes to somewhat normal next year?
Normal next year. I think that they can operate.
It's no threat? It's no threat to the festival?
It could always be great to have another seventeen thousand, but I think it's doable.
Okay.
They're, they're going to make their funding request. We're, we're going to be done this budget and within a few months, we're going to be into it, into the next one. So they're going to make their funding request for the next Acadian Festival.
Right.
Then.
I think that group would understand the situation.
Yep.
That would be my recommendation.
Yep.
Yeah, it'll, it'll give us the buffer to fund, like Gary said, later on, the, the Albert House.
I know. I know.
Uh, next request is Four Seasons. Uh, Four Seasons, we've, we funded them at this level for, since their inception, I believe, up on the hill. Farmers Market, we do budget in there. Money's for activities at the Farmers Market and advertising. We've not posted a lot of expenses there, um, because we're just trying to build that, that, that venue up, um, over there. Uh, I would like to continue to see us to fund the Farmers Market budget. Uh, and we need to better utilize those funds in, in years moving forward. Uh, I will say that, just, I don't want to take too much of your time. The way that Farmers Markets in Maine generally are supposed to work, they are usually governed by the people that use them, the members of the Farmers Market, who, who might pick up a membership, pay for their season, and they form a governing body, and they make decisions, and they run the Farmers Market. That's the Farmers Market model in Maine. So we don't have a lot of farmers, local small farmers, that, you know, we have big farms. We don't have a lot of small, we have the Heberts, um, but we don't have a lot of small farms. Be able to make up, uh, a lot of vendors, not only farmers, but people that make stuff that would want to sell there. That would make up a, a, a big enough group of people that could govern. And so one of the thoughts, and right, so right now, we're, we're governing the Farmers Market. And so we have a set of bylaws, and everything gets funneled through me and for requests and permit, uh, seasonal permits and whatnot. Uh, and if there's issues with bylaws, you know, then we come before the board and we say, well, you know, I think we need to adjust this and we need to adjust that. So the goal would be to kind of move the governance of that out of the, out of this board, if you will. It is a resource of the town. We did acquire a significant grant to make that happen. Uh, it's a beautiful facility. And so, um, there are some discussions in, in getting back to the chamber and trying to reinvent the chamber in, in the sense that we could utilize that Farmers Market, not just for Farmers Market, but for many other things in our, in the downtown. And it could be something that maybe, and it's just a discussion, it's not even something that was, just throwing ideas out there, that maybe the, the chamber could be more involved in attracting businesses to the, to Farmers Market or vendors. And that would help to bring about some, um, relevance, so bring some new blood, some new traffic into the Farmers, into the chamber. And we could continue to have a Farmers Market there. That would be the primary use. But there, you know, there's business hours for the Farmers Market, and then there's off hours, and we could probably do stuff there. So I think we're looking at that, uh, and, and it's part of our programming discussions going on right now, starting to go on right now, about what can we do for that, for reinvigorating things in town here. So I'd like to keep that two thousand dollar place market there for the Farmers Market for expenses, repairs, uh, you know, stuff like that. Uh, marketing. So all in all, uh, with the change that we just made, uh, do you have any discussions and any talks, anything on that?
I'm all set, if anybody else?
Before we move on? Okay.
I don't know if I give it to the chamber. They're not doing so well right now. If I run my market, then that won't work as well either.
Well, I know.
I'd probably give it to somebody who can have a shot at making something work.
It's not, it's not a dig on, on Sharon or the board. It's just, I, I tend to agree with Dan. Like now you, when I was in the chamber twenty years ago, I, every other phone call was, where can I stay? And where can I rent a seat? And where can I rent a camp? And where can I? And now it's all online. Everything's out there, and, and so I just question, you know, it, it, is, is the fifteen even going to help make a difference for them? You know, it, they were already struggling, so it's not to say like, you know, that she can't make stuff work. I, I don't want that.
You know, that's a good point, Lori. Um, and, and I want you to know that the discussions that we're starting to have right now, and, and this is going to play right into what Dan was saying. What we're trying to do in, in our town is leverage all of our organizations that right now exist by themselves. And you've got people there that have been there forever, and, and officers and volunteers. And they're working to make themselves survive, and they're not synchronized at all with any other. And that's what we're trying, we're trying to build that community back.
I understand.
To what we're trying to do.
We're giving a little bit to this one, a little bit to this one, a little bit to this one, and it's a bunch, to me, it's just, you know, like we're.
Well, I, I think it, it's about community building and building relationships and making things happen. And I think that, um, like the chamber, for instance, and I, and I get what you're saying because they were like the directory for businesses essentially for so many years. But now that with social media, it bypasses them, right? So because everybody's doing their own push on, on marketing. But the chamber could be instrumental perhaps in, uh, bringing people into the town to spend money at local businesses. And that's what we're trying, that's the kind of vision that we're trying to put together is what can we do as a town? And not spending a lot of money here. We're, we're talking about leveraging the resources that we have and the organizations that are already there to highlight and promote what we already have, that we know that we have, and just make it more, more visible in, in the areas that we now have in our downtown, to bring people from either out of town and to bring people from nearby towns here in a coordinated fashion that meets certain metrics that when we do a program, if you will, and I know I'm digressing, but when we do a programming thing, an activity that might be for two hours, one evening, in whatever season, that we're going to be able to turn around and say, well, did, were the businesses open for that during that time so that they could draw some people in? And how many of those people went to shop? How many people were there? We want to be able to verify those things. And so I think in that sense, that's the reinvention of the chamber, that, or at least part of the reinvention of the chamber that I'm thinking of. Because, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm not ready to pull the plug on them just yet. I think they can still play a valuable role. It just needs to be redefined. And I think they're working, they need help. They're, they're on an island, and they don't have a lot of money to work with when, at a time when they need more money to work with to, to change the course. So, um, that's kind of like where I'm at with that.
I believe that the entire St. John River Valley suffers from mindset, if you will. You take all of the longstanding businesses, they were all born and established and kept going by the mindset, mindset of the French Acadians that hard work, long days, going to pay off. The business world has changed and is changing more rapidly than we can follow. And I was a recipient of, of the good of that, if you will, in the last three years that I ran the cabins. And I would just like to suggest, bear in mind, there is nothing wrong with getting outside help. The revenues, even if we have to fork out a little bit of money, the return on those investments can be very big for the town. Marketing strategies, how to reach other people, where to hit, what to do, there, you know, that's way above my, you might understand some of that, and you. But when I'm dead and gone, keep the people coming.
You'll come in.
I, you know, I mean, Dan, I, I don't, I, I think you're, you're, you're certainly on point. And, and I believe that we are working in that direction. That's all I can say at this point. It's kind of early yet to be able to say too much about this, but.
I think what, what you're, everybody understands exactly how you're describing, how you feel that works. I feel different. Do I feel that the chamber is, is relevant in today's world? Possibly not. I mean, it's pretty ideal that every chamber around you is not doing that well. But I think for us here, have an opportunity to maybe utilize that chamber or something that's already existing. Yes, it's at a funded level, but there may be a possibility that thinking outside the box would give that chamber an opportunity to reinvent itself. Give it a year, give it an opportunity. I think that's what I'm hearing out of you is just, we're asking for one more year. Let's give this a try. Let's see if this can work for us in a different way. And if it doesn't, then you stop the funding. But I think there's no harm in trying, kind of the last ditch effort, saying, okay, we want to try it one more time. Like, you know, like you said, Doug, within a year, I think you're going to know whether that's, whether that's going to work or not.
Right.
And that's when you make your decisions. There's possibly an opportunity that that chamber could, you could bring in exactly what you're saying. It could be that role. It could be that role for the businesses that are existing to put, put the name out there. That's really what their role is for anyway, the chamber, right? So maybe a crossroad that's in front of us that we may stumble upon, and it might be the best thing we've ever done, or.
It's going to fall in space.
It's going to be a waste of fifteen thousand dollars, whatever you want to call it. So you're at a crossroad, and you've got to make a decision whether to move forward.
An eighteen-year-old with a cell phone, that's what you need.
I wasn't looking to like defund them. I'm saying I can't swallow the increases. I mean, they, I, that's all. I can't, there's a lot of increases that I'm struggling with that we can't do anything about because they're not ours, but.
Yeah, I would like to go back to one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Four Seasons, if you don't mind.
Yep.
If I understand correctly, we give them four thousand dollars a year? Whether they make profit or not.
I got to get back to you on that, but I think that, that's, that's sort of a wash because, um.
That's really what it is. It's, it's a wash for, for the taxes.
For the property taxes.
That's all it is. It's not, it's not a, uh, it's, it's not a fund that has anything to do with their operation.
Yeah. I'm glad that you brought it up, and I'm glad that, because Doug, Doug is, knows very well, and. Okay.
Keep, keep going.
So that, uh, all in all, with the change that we just made, uh, has an overall intergovernmental budget of one million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, one eighty-three, down from one million, three sixty-four, three one four, roughly a few, a few grand.
And you'll check on the sidewalk match?
And I will check on the sidewalk match.
Okay. Is that it on, uh, on Department one-ten? Then let's move on to Article eight to consider Department seven-thirty debt service budget.
So right now, um, we have debt service. I'll, I'll go down through there. We have our two thousand twenty single actual, uh, plow truck, lease to own, paid it for fifty-three thousand, five thirty-nine. Uh, last year we had sixty, sixty-two thousand dollars in there in the previous budget. Our paving CSO loan, so back in, my God, I can't remember the year. The town did a paving project, and it was in tandem with a sewer project. CSO stands for combined sewer overflow, and so the town had some paving associated with that, uh, in addition to the sewers project. So the town's had an absorbed sewers project. They just did some paving, and it was called that paving CSO loan. That loan is going to be paid off next year. Okay? That's the discussion that we were having in regards to the paving project, the three million dollar paving project, that when, you know, if that project had it move forward, um, we were, this debt was going to fall off at the same time as the new debt was coming on for that loan. And then we were going to reduce the paving amount in our budget, like in the road reserve part, to basically make that net zero for an increase. And so, um, that's that.
So is this the last year for this then?
Next year. Uh, hold on. I believe the twenty-one is the last year. Uh, moving on down, we have, hold on here. Our downtown revitalization loan of two forty-one, um, one eleven, that's our annual payment. Moving on down, we have our payload release. That one is, we've, I think, Kevin? We're, our payload release, we are, what, our second year into a three? We're in our third year or three, or a five-year lease? I don't have my, my debt service schedule in front of me, so, um, hold on.
I, I don't understand that figure. I don't understand that, that line.
What's that?
Well, it just that there, you, we're budgeting zero, but we've already got fifteen thousand in there, which is probably what we expended the year before. But why, why do we have zero there? Is it paid off?
That's the skits year.
Yeah.
It's paid off.
Okay, so it is paid off.
Yeah, I, we just never took it out of the, we left it there just to show that in the past, we had that payment. We would like to show that history, so we, 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 we leave it in there. Uh, we have, um, our payload release.
Pay, payroll, yep.
Of thirty-six thousand dollars. We have our public works pickup lease, uh, we're two years into a three-year payment on, onto a five-year loan on that. This year, we acquired the one-ton, uh, pickup with a dump body, with the plow on there. The payment on that is ten thousand, six hundred, ten. Uh, that's for five years. And our light project lease, this is the first year that we're making payments on that. So our total debt service is four ninety-six, uh, two oh four. Any questions?
Streetlight project lease is, uh, ongoing.
Uh, that's.
It's not something that's going away?
Oh, yeah, five years.
Five years.
Five-year financing on that. It's, we call it lease. It's, it's lease to own. So the overall municipal debt is, I think if I hadn't said it, is four ninety-six, two oh four, as compared to last year's four, thirty-four, four seventy-three.
Do these leases?
They're ours.
Operate the same way as if you go lease a car with option to buy? Because I've looked into leasing a pickup truck and looking to buy it at the end, and it's far more expensive.
Yeah, yeah. It's not that. It's.
It's not the same.
It's basically, it's a lease, and at the end of the lease, you made all your payments. Here's the keys. It's yours. We own.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, there's no buyout at the end.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, if, just for, um, we have to revisit the paving project, right? And so we had discussed briefly, which I know this is not time for this huge discussion, but, um, we had discussed possibly reinventing that and putting that on the warrant at the town meeting. If that was at the warrant on the town meeting, and we went with that in the spring, you would only hit the bond bank in the spring potentially, and if you missed that, I'm just trying to think, this, this seven, one seventeen, one seventy-six, if it goes to twenty-twenty-one, the paving project wouldn't hit till twenty-twenty-two, right?
So with, with the Maine Municipal Bond Bank, they have two.
Right.
Two bond schedules. One is a spring bond, and one is the fall. Fall bond is probably the one that we would go for, and the closing for that would be November. So any, a debt that would be incurred would be signed in November, would be due the following, first payment would be due the following year. And typically, they have two payments that are scheduled two ways. It's, it can be interest and then payments. They have those kind of spread out, uh, interest and principal.
But then we'd have to get financing in the spring?
Right. So a lot of the time, when you have a project like that, just like our sewer project we did, we have to get some interim financing. And so, we go out to bids basically for, uh, a lending institution to lend us money, which is called the interim financing. This is important because, uh, the timing of this is crucial. If, if we incur a loan in a spring uh, bond, if we will, we would get that money, we wouldn't need the interim financing, but that would make our payment fall one year sooner, cause we'd be into the next fiscal year, we'd be in the current fiscal year. So, if we wait for the fall bond, we pick up interim financing, there is some, some interest fees associated with that, but if we wait for the fall bond, um, then that debt would be for the next fiscal year, so.
Now, the money we borrow, is that just to hold us out until we collect our taxes? Is that just?
No, the, the interim financing would be to hold us out until we go to the bond bank to borrow the money in, in November.
Then that's really what you're questioning, right? Not the project itself.
I'm not questioning the project itself.
Yeah.
I know, like, you know, prior boards and the town actually had said, let's borrow three million and pave the road, so, uh, we have to revisit that at this point. I'm just, we're looking at debt expense and I wanna understand the budget, and I wanna understand if, let's pretend this board next week says, yes, we're gonna put that on the warrant, is that gonna hit this budget? Cause that's a lot. Okay, that's all I wanna know.
No, because this budget, this budget gets done in June.
But eventually we'll have to get to it.
Oh, no, no, that's right, that's, I mean, and that's a discussion for.
So, that's the scary part for me?
That's a discussion for, for later.
Yeah.
We know. That's, that's, had we not been interested in, in, in doing a project and, and, and understanding that the need for the project, we wouldn't have had put forth a project. So, Kevin and I worked in, in Dana, when she was here, worked extremely hard to bring forth a project that was minimal impact to the taxpayers, it was really, basically, uh, it wasn't showing any tax increase, because the way we were cash flowing it, retiring old debt, you know, waiting for that debt to fall out and then being able to reduce the paving, the amount of paving we do on an annual basis. Now, is it perfect plan? No. We got so far behind in our paving with our fifty-five mile roads, fifty-five lane, lane miles of roads that we have to pave and our streets that are four lanes wide, four lanes wide here in town, and, and having acquired Lake Shore Road from the state of Maine, we have to do more, you know, and no, no, we don't have a choice. So, this year we were a little bit floored with, with the, uh, with the economy and, and, and the board felt like they wanted to just pause and get a better feel for the economy and being able to pay for this.
Ultimately, it's gonna have to get done, correct?
Absolutely.
So, we're talking up, we're talking a mill rate increase again, though.
Well.
The debt service, the debt service, Dan, for the, for a three million dollar loan over twenty years would be roughly two, two-thirds of a mil.
Yeah, we have one here, it's two forty-four, or two forty, two, you know, quarter of a million dollar payment, basically.
Which is, you know, three fifty makes a mil, so two hundred and fifty, if a quarter of a million dollar, you're talking two-thirds of a mil.
Okay, so.
So, we reduce, we, we're gonna lose the, uh, we're gonna lose that hundred and seventeen, one seventy-six there in twenty twenty-one, which is the, the partial offset.
Partial of that.
Of, of that.
And then we will have the significantly caught up in our paving schedule with this large project that we would not have to continue to budget large, those amount, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, so we were gonna be able to offset that through reducing our annual paving schedule, because we did so much all at once. And then, having that debt service fall off, it was not gonna be showing increase.
We're still going up on the spe, on the spending. We can't, you know, this is not just a juggling act.
Well, I mean, i- 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 if, 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 if these figures roughly represent what we're looking at, uh, you know, two hundred and forty-one thousand represents that two-thirds of a mil, and you've got a hundred and seventeen thousand that you're gonna lose, so you're gonna have an increase there of roughly, what, a hundred and twenty thousand? An in, an actual increase.
So, what are we to respond when the taxpayers ask, why are we not cutting across the board, given percentage? Why are we not cutting back so that the melt rate doesn't go up, or so that our taxes don't go up?
So, I think at that point, you'd have to ask the taxpayers, what essential service do you wanna cut?
Exactly.
Have nothing left. So, either you, do you want your roads fixed or you don't, if you wanna get them fixed, you gotta pay for it. And at the same time, you gotta pay for it, you don't wanna shut your fire department down, you don't wanna shut your ambulance service down, so it's hard decisions and.
Comes back to what Lori mentioned, what are the needs and what are the wants? Because our roads, right now, uh, i- if we wait, um, just a bit longer, the cost to repair them is going to be double what it is today. We're at that point.
The problem, Dan, in the community is that what are needs and wants for me are not the same needs and wants for you. And that was one of the reasons I said, you know, which I already got twenty texts saying, oh, you can't cut that department, you can't do this. There, I just wanted to put, at the end of this budget cycle, to not drop this, I would like to put a bunch of people's heads together and say, okay, we have now, you know, a year or something, and let's visit all of these things that people are suggesting. And, and, because you, here I brought up, I brought up the rec department, a lot of people are saying it's, it's way overfunded, it's too much, people are angry, the older people that don't have children in it, but then the young families want it, so for them it's a need. And it may be an economic development need. So, how do we determine as a board of five, what are the needs of the whole community?
It's very simple.
You know, I, it, we need that input from people.
A need is something that if you neglect it today, it's gonna cost you a fortune just down the road. That's a need.
Oh, I agree, I don't disagree with you.
Uh, we've got, we've got the roof of our safety complex building right now. That's leaking, causing damage, as far as I'm concerned. Right now, we're turning a blind eye to it because we just don't have the money.
Right.
But that's gonna turn, turn around and bite us, because if we do get the money next year, the year after, whatever the case might be, that project, the cost will have tripled by the time we get there. So, in my mind, that's a need.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, I'm just saying, you know, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just saying that, you know, what, what some people feel they need to live in this community is not the same thing that you feel you need, you know?
Decisions to be made.
Huh?
That's right. When you put your name on the ballot, they sit in these seats, you're not here to make changes, you haven't made decisions.
Uh, that's a hundred percent right, but half of the community wants you to cut this and half wants you to cut that, so I think it deserves some community input. I, I'm not saying I don't wanna cut here or there, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just, uh, you know, before we start eliminating a whole department, you, you need to do this, the work behind that and study it and, um, make sure you're doing the right thing and make sure that's what the taxpayers want. Cause there are taxpayers out there that'll say, hey, provide the services that we want, taxes are taxes, it is what it is, you know?
Taxpayers with good-paying jobs, but the families that are struggling.
I understand, but they all get to vote.
It's to the point where some of the taxes, of the people, are so high that they don't wanna live in this community. Now, that's pretty sad.
It is.
That's very sad.
And the population, the age of our population is rapidly rising.
Yeah.
It is, uh, but where do you make the decision of, you know what I mean?
We're trying to make it here now.
Yeah.
We have no choice.
Yeah.
It's a balance.
You're gonna have to make some, we have to find a little bit of.
It's a balance and, you know, yeah, there's a lot of things that have to be done, and a lot of things that some people view as a need or want, but, uh, sailing. Stand above or look from the, from the forest down, because if you cut out, say you cut out the rec, I'm just using this for, say you cut the rec to fix the fire department's issue and replace, uh, that building and then some other time, right? You might cut it, you might appease the people that want that fixed, but the people that went to the rec are not gonna leave town, so you've lost your tax base there, what did you gain?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a fine balance.
That's why we're getting paid the big bucks, don't you know?
Oh, speaking of that, Doug, I'd really like to eliminate board stipends, by the way.
Let's do it. All right, anything else that we need to discuss here, cause we've been at this for a while?
Question, does the school department charge you guys for tonight?
No.
No.
Anything else, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn here. Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? So, we're adjourned till tomorrow night?
Kept me up so late, I don't think I wanna meet him, I'm gonna wait a little bit, go Red Street to the bakery.
So, instead of my phone pinging at four A M., it's gonna be one A M., two A M., three A M.